All right, can you guys hear me okay? Excellent, I don't know whether or not it's coming through my AirPod.
Make sure there can.
Then everybody at City Hall, give me just a noise and see whether or not you can, I can hear you.
We are here.
Okay, excellent, I can hear you just fine, thank you so much. Um, good evening, everybody. I think we have. We've got Noel, Jim, Jen, Suzie. I think we've got a quorum to get us going today, so um. Good evening, everybody, it is just after six P M on Monday, March twenty 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 three, calling to order the City of Carlton's Planning Commission. Uh, meeting and hearing today, we'll first do a call to order with a roll call um by Miss Amy Amerson.
All right. Commissioner Dick. Intended?
Present.
Commissioner Bandi.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Terrell.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Nordstrom.
Here.
Commissioner uh Amaya.
Here.
Thank you, uh. Commissioner Madrid, Fernandez Madrid. Uh, not present at this time, and Chair Stewart.
Present. Thank you, Amy. Um, for the first of the evening, do we have any changes to the agenda?
I I actually had just a quick, I I did actually. Oh, wait, oh yeah, I'm on, okay, um, I actually just wanted a quick clarification, I I'm hoping our city engineers here. Um, could you tell me when Han Creek Pump Station was completed? Does anybody know that, anybody on staff?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
So it it's up and run, it's up and running.
Okay.
It's operational, it's not quite completed because the new generator is not. Here yet and probably won't be till May, we left the existing generator. Online, it will operate one. Pump at a time, so we consider it operational.
Okay, when when was it completed, could you tell me?
Well, like I said, it's not quite completed yet.
Oh.
It won't be completed until the generator is installed, which probably is in June, but it's considered substantially complete. Because it's operational, it can operate as intended.
Okay, how long?
And I don't have, I don't have the exact date with, right now.
Yeah, you don't know how long it's been operational? In its full capacity?
It seems like it's been several months now.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Um, I believe we have an oath of office for Miss Noel Amaya, uh, Amy, will you read her in, please?
All right, Noel, we didn't get to do this um at your very first meeting, so if, the best way on Zoom if we could do this is just have you raise your right, right hand, and if you have your oath in front of you, that's the smoothest way to do it, is raise your right hand and read from there. Um, and then we get you in and official, if not, you, we can repeat, either way works.
Uh, sure, so I just start at any time?
Yep.
Okay, uh, here, let me, let me move my screen here so I can see it better. Um, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay, uh, I Noel Amaya, the undersigned duly appointed planning commissioner for the City of Carlton. To hereby solemnly swear, I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America and the State of Oregon. And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Carlton, and I will faithfully perform my duties as planning commissioner to the best of my ability.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Formal welcome to the team, thank you so much for being here, we really appreciate the involvement and uh the volunteering. Um, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes dated February twenty one twenty twenty three, last month's meeting minutes, and they can be found at page three and pay, page three through five on this week's meeting packet. Did everybody had a chance to review that, and if so, do you have any proposed modifications to those minutes? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we could accept a motion to approve and a second to approve.
Commissioner Madrid would move to approve.
Second.
First by Miss Madrid, second by Miss Nordstrom, all in favor of approving the February twenty one twenty twenty three minutes, say aye, give a little digital hand.
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Hearing none, opposed, the matter is passed unanimously to February twenty one twenty twenty three matters, uh, meeting minutes ha- have been approved. Uh, at this time, we would like to welcome citizen comments, this is for comments on anything that is not on the agenda here this evening, we have one agenda item that has to do with a subdivision request for J R Meadows Phase Three, I expect there will be some community comment, but if there are any comments. On any other matter that are not, that is not on our uh agenda tonight, now is the time that you can raise your hand. I see one little digital orange hand by an Eric, um, at this, I would just ask you to place your full name uh on the record and let us know if you live in the City of Carlton, and you're free to go.
Hi there, um, sorry, my name is actually Kaylee Hare, I'm just using my son's Zoom account. Um, I live on South Seventh Street. Um, and I'm here hoping that the Planning Commission might be able to give me some insight as to what is going on with correcting the speed problem that we've been having on our street and has been. Discussed for some time now, um. I'm a little concerned because after the last city council meeting, it seems like we're going backwards a little bit. Um, the results of the speed tests were given to council members, and it appears that the results. Were cherry picked, so is to side with the city's now apparent desire to do nothing. Um, at least that's how it appears, I hope I'm wrong. Um, according to the city or city council. It looks like, you know. The average speed being fourteen miles an hour was kind of latched on to. And those high speeds that were captured were just kind of written off as anomalies, um, to be forgotten about. Um. The whole process is a little bit infuriating because it was only a couple of months ago that Mayor Watkins stood in my driveway. And showed concern for um the fear that the residents were having. Um, she even seemed to say she had the same problem on our street, or her street, sorry. Um, and she recommended that we get a petition from residents and submit it to the city. In that short amount of time that we had for the council meeting, we were able to get thirty seven signatures for people that believed we had a problem on our street. In fact, several of them said that they had reached out to the city already to complain about the issue, but were concerned that the problem had fallen on deaf ears. Um. The petition seemed to catch the city's attention for a quick minute. Uh, City Manager Shannon even emailed a neighbor of mine with uh and she CC'd myself. Um, to let us know that she was losing sleep over the issue and wanted to meet with residents to discuss solutions. Well, nothing ever came of that, um, but in the email, she cautioned that we not get caught up in referring. The fact that the code was out of date and not even followed when building Seventh Street, because she didn't want it to diminish the residents' concern. Uh, well, I'm sorry, but didn't this commission, Planning Commission submit an entire report about how Seventh Street? Was built so poorly that it's inevitable that speed of traffic would be an issue, and even had an ODOT representative confirm that information and give represent, recommendations on how to solve the issue? Um. So, if the city can't see that their actions are negligent to the point where several of our neighbors refuse to come to any more council meetings. And have even recommended that we give it up because, and I'm gonna quote them, the city will never do the right thing. Um, that's kind of the word that's going around on the street right now, and I'm, I just don't know what to do anymore, um. So I guess I'm just here to keep trying and ask once again. Uh, for the Planning Commission's continued help. Um, I do appreciate what you've done so far, and I just, I I would love to see some progress with that, and I'm hoping the city councillors and the government will hear this as well. And please do something to make Seventh Street and Washington Street safer, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments this evening, we we appreciate them very much, I know that the matter uh is not, has not been forgotten, continues to be discussed and will be pursued by the City Council. As you may or may not know, the Planning Commission is in advisory role to the City Council, and as you have recognized. We have made a consistent concerted effort to bring this matter to the council's attention, but we are not. The legislative body on behalf of the city, so I would encourage you to maintain the zeal and participation that uh you have demonstrated hereby this evening. But I would direct future comments to the City Council directly, they are the ones with the powers of the purse string. And of as far as viewing this priority in the context of the city's broader prioritized um tasks. And other safety matters, we will continue to voice uh concerns as and where appropriate. But we have spoken uh unanimously as a planning commission in support of addressing this, I know that the city staff continues to focus on this, and I know that um. Sometimes the pace of change, especially when we're doing things subject to procedure can feel um a little bit. Uh, unsatisfactory, but I assure you that this is being continued, and I would direct your comments for. A continued city council meeting so that this can remain at the top of their uh perspective, and if you can tell your friends and family as well, those on the street that are interested uh should be encouraged to continue to make their voice heard. One month or two month, it seems like a long time, but in the, in the, in the scope of planning and uh legislative processes, it's a rather short period, so we're gonna continue to focus on that, we very much appreciate your comment.
Uh, I mean, and if, and if I may say, I do, I recognize what you're saying and I appreciate it, um, but when we're talking about literal safety, I I don't think we can. Push it off is, well, I know two months seems like a long time, but we're trying it. Um, like I said, I recognize that you are the Planning Commission, and this is a city council thing. Um, but I appreciate any help you can get or give um in those regards, thank you.
Understood, we appreciate it very much, thank you. Um, any other citizen comments this evening on any agenda items that are not uh before the Planning Commission this evening? Amy, is there anybody else in City Hall? Or uh down at this, the city facilities?
Uh, there's none.
Excellent, if anybody else uh does hear this right now and would like to make a citizen comment, we can provide an opportunity for doing so at the end of our meeting. Please just interrupt us before we adjourn for the evening and after our commissioner comments or any other new business. With that said, we are going to move on for our primary discussion topic for the evening, that's S U B twenty twenty three dash zero one J R Meadows Phase Three. Uh, the applicant is Chad E. Davis Construction, I'm gonna briefly pull up a couple of. Uh, announcements that have to be made. And this is a public hearing, um, because we are going to be serving in our role as a quasi judicial body. Um, and for that reason, I have a pre-hearing statement. Uh, first, I will open the public hearing as of six fifteen P M today on March twentieth. Um, I, as I just announced, it's subdivision twenty twenty three dash zero one J R Meadows Phase Three. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application and must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of a decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. Any individuals appearing remotely must have their full names spelled out in their Zoom account identifier. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision, those criteria and findings of fact are found in the city's staff report. Public testimony should be listed to, limited to those criteria and findings of fact, or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue. Precludes appeal to the land use board or to seek damages in the circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask for the council. Uh, excuse me, may ask the council for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing's body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance, to a date and time certain. Or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony. The order of proceedings are generally as follows, required statements, staff report, applicant's presentation. Those speaking in favor of the application, those opposed to the application, those providing neutral testimony, a rebuttal by the applicant. Any requests for continuance to leave the record open, a close of the hearing, a close of the record, deliberations by the Planning Commission, and finally a decision. With that said. I will first call for any objections to the Planning Commission's jurisdiction to hear this matter, S U B twenty twenty three dash zero one this evening. I know Amy would let me know if there was somebody there in person uh making such a challenge, and I see no one in Zoom land, so we will proceed. Uh, we will start this evening with a staff report, which appears to be Mister Kyle Jenkins, who I didn't expect to see, is that correct?
It is, I'm back for, for this project and this project only.
How lucky are we, this is like hanging out with somebody who has a DeLorean, uh, we will give you the floor, Mister Jenkins, thank you.
Couldn't stay away, um, yeah, so uh, I just want, before I start the staff report, I just wanna mention that. You know, a lot of these issues are things that we've discussed, a lot of these. Elements and findings in the staff reporter stuff that we've discussed over the past few years, so I really encourage the Planning Commission, if there's anything in the staff report or anything that. Um, you know, that I mentioned in the staff report and oral staff report. Uh, welcome any questions at the end, if there's anything that needs to be clarified, I really wanna make sure that all of those questions are answered um to the best of my ability, and and Gordon is also here, a city engineer, so. Uh, both of us are here to answer any of your questions, um, but I'm gonna get into the staff report uh to start. Uh, so, as Chair Stewart mentioned, uh, this is an application for uh preliminary subdivision approval for a hundred and one uh residential lots, uh file number S U B twenty three dash zero one. Uh, applicant is Chatty Davis Construction, um, and the consultant on the project uh was, is A K S Engineering. Uh, the location of the site is just south of the Carlton Elementary School, bounded by Third Street to the west and South Seventh Street to the east. Uh, that's west of uh J R Meadows Two. That's the west of Seventh, uh, tax lot, uh, three, four, two, two, C, C, a lot twelve hundred, and the site size is sixteen acres. Uh, the comprehensive plan map designation is residential and the zoning uh is residential medium density or R two. Uh, criteria are listed in your staff report uh under the criteria section. Uh, exhibits to your staff report, uh, exhibit A, exhibit is the vicinity map, exhibit B is the city engineers' comments, exhibit C. Uh, the preliminary subdivision plans, exhibit D uh is the subdivision application narrative, and exhibit E is the D S L wetland response. Um, also note that we've received some public comment that I believe Amy has uh sent out to you um uh when it was received, which was after the staff report was finalized, so I believe we have uh five different. Uh, pieces of public comment that were, that were sent out last week, so if you have any questions on those, uh, feel free to ask. Uh, so again, the the request is uh a hundred and one residential lot subdivision, um, of these a hundred and one lots, sixty three will accommodate detached single family homes and thirty eight will attached, attached, there's accommodate, excuse me, attached single family homes. Uh, or townhomes, um, the subdivision proposal includes an extension of Third Street from the north and offsite improvements to Third Street north of the subject property between Cleveland and Polk. Uh, the subdivision also can, includes the continuation of Wilson Cleveland Streets from the east. Uh, the development of Taylor Street is a new east-west street and a fifth street of, as a new uh north-south street. Uh, subdivision applications are two actions and shall be considered uh in accordance with the provisions of Carlton Development Code, section seventeen point one eight eight point zero two zero. Uh, the application fee were received on the twenty third of January twenty twenty three and deemed incomplete on February first. Uh, the application was then resubmitted on the twenty seventh of February and deemed in, in, incomplete on March first. Uh, the city has until June twenty ninth uh or until, or a hundred and twenty days from the date the application was deemed complete to approve. Uh, modify uh or deny this approach proposal, including an appeal decision applicable. Uh, notice of the hearing was mailed on March first, twenty days prior to today's hearing. Uh, the hearing will be conducted in accordance with section seventeen point one nine six of the Carlton Development Code. Uh, a request for comment was sent to ODOT D S L, the city engineer, uh, applicable private utility agencies in the Carlton Fire District. Uh, as well as the Amel County School District, um, Carlton or Don't Amel Carlton, excuse me. Um, comments from the city engineer are attached to as exhibit B, uh, no other comment has been received as of the date of the staff report. Um. Uh, appeals are governed by uh Carlton Development Code, section seventeen point two, two, zero, four, an appeal of the commission's decision shall be made in writing to the city council within ten days for the Planning Commission's final written decision. Um, again, just a a short overview of the site, uh, it's currently vacant and located south of the the Amel Carlton Elementary School and to the west of J R Meadows Two. Uh, budding properties to the south and east are zoned agricultural holding and R two respectively. Uh, adjacent properties to the west are zoned R three M X uh and public facilities and R one to the north. Um. The budding properties are primarily vacant, but there are uh a few residential structures uh associated, and associated outbuildings located to the southwest, west and north of the subject property. Uh, just for um a little bit of housekeeping, uh, the subject property was rezoned and re designated from agricultural holding. Uh, to residential medium density or R two in November twenty twenty one, um, as some of you might remember. Uh, criteria for subdivisions are located in section seventeen point one seven six of the development code, I'm gonna go through a few uh, a little quicker than others, and I'm gonna focus in on a few that that I know. Um, are are really important for the purposes of of this specific application, um. Generally, uh, the, our residential R two subdivision provides for single family um and duplex housing at an average density of ten dwelling units per acre or less. Um, which is consistent with that residential medium density comprehensive plan designation. Uh, the subject site is sixteen acres and proposes a hundred and one residential units, which is about six point three units an acre, which is within that permitted density range. Um, again, we have that block of of attached um single family homes, which uh is permitted um after the city council approved. Uh, the code amendments to the R two zone, I believe, back in um, was it November, October, um, so that is um. Why, one of the reasons why we are now able to have those um little, a little more variety of of uh housing types within subdivisions in the R two zone. Um, I included under seventeen point two two point zero four zero, which is the dimensional standards of the R two zone. Um, the table taken directly from the code and responses in red. Um, the majority of these uh kind of setback related standards are reviewed upon building permits in middle because they're specific to structures and subdivisions don't. Uh, propose any structures, but I wanna go through a few that are not. Uh, specifically, uh, the minimum lot size for non-common well, well dwellings or detached homes uh range or is six thousand square feet. Um, as shown on on in exhibit C, which is the preliminary plans, uh, these lots, the detached lots uh range from around six thousand to sixty-seven hundred square feet, which meets that minimum standard. Uh, for the lots that are intended for attached or townhome dwellings with a maximum of two consecutively attached units. Uh, the minimum lot size is twenty-four hundred square feet for interior lot and four thousand square feet for a corner lot. Um, as proposed, interior lots um range from about twenty-five hundred feet to twenty-nine hundred square feet. Uh, and corner lots, uh, also as designed for that, uh, single family attached development, range from four thousand um to almost forty-one hundred square feet, so all proposed lots meet the, meet the minimum lot size standard as um proposed. Uh, there are no uh duplex specific lots um proposed, um. Let's move forward, I mentioned setbacks are all reviewed um at building permit level, um, I did, I will get into, there is a s- setback specific. Um, issue that that we have identified that I will discuss later in the staff report um with regards to the front yard setback, but I'm just gonna run through the required front yard setback. Um, is fifteen feet, uh, with, except for twenty feet for a garage, the rear yard, minimum rear yard is fifteen feet. Um, the side yard um uh is three feet, um, except for zero feet for adjoining townhome units and the side yard adjacent to streets, so for uh corner lots uh is ten feet. Um, maximum structure height is thirty-five feet, again, building heights are reviewed at the building permit level, uh, minimum lot width at building line is uh twenty-four feet, except for forty feet for corner lots. Um, all of the interior lots range from twenty-five to sixty feet, depending on whether uh an attached home or a detached home is proposed. You know, corner lots have lot widths ranging from around forty to forty-three feet, which also meets that standard. Uh, specific demand, development standards listed in seventeen point two two point zero five zero, a lot of these are covered um under general development standards, so I'm gonna go through those a little more quickly, um, specifically. Are specified in seventeen point six eight, um, subdivision requirements and lot uh development requirements specified in seventeen point one seven two. Um, maximum lot coverage, um, which is. Again, something that that depends on on what the building is or when the building is built and was reviewed upon building permit. Um, is also again reviewed at the building permit level. Uh, yards and lots, signs, driveways, landscaping, uh, building and site design. Um, are all reviewed within their own general standards, which I'll get to in just a second. Um, street standards, so I know streets have been a big topic conversation in the Planning Commission, so I'm gonna go through this section a little more detail. Um, than maybe I have in the past for for some other uh applications. Um. Seventeen point six four point oh three oh states that the location, width and grade of streets shall be considered in their relation to existing and planned streets to topographical commission, conditions to public convenience and safety. And to the proposed use of the land to be served by the streets. Uh, additionally, development proposals shall provide for the continuation connection to all streets, bikeways and pedestrian facilities within the development and to existing streets, bikeways and pedestrian facilities outside the development. So in this case, this is the connected uh streets, Third Street to the north, um, we're running north-south, and then Wilson and Cleveland um to the east uh through J R two. Um. So criteria E applies to existing streets, um, and for existing streets, three-quarter improvements, so that means three-quarters of the street. To all existing streets adjacent to, within, or necessary to serve the property shall be required at the time of partitioning or subdivision, unless the applicant demonstrates to the satisfaction. Of the city engineer that the condition and sections of the existing streets meet city standards and are satisfactory condition to handle projected traffic loads. Uh, so the three-quarter street improvements that are proposed are those streets that are on the external boundaries of the site. Uh, so in this case, we're, we're talking about Cleveland Street to the north and South Third Street to the west. Uh, so those are the two streets um that are proposed to include three-quarter improvements. Um, so in this case, the specific dimensions of Third Street, uh, this includes the offsite portion between Polk and Cleveland. Um, which is designated as a school zone collector street, uh, the requirements for a school zone collector feet, the street, excuse me, are forty-nine feet of right-of-way, thirty-four feet of pavement, a five-foot bike lane, curb and gutter, and a six-foot sidewalk. Um, that is proposing fifty feet of right-of-way. Again, that three-quarter cross-section, which includes twenty-five feet of pavement, curb and gutter, and a six-foot sidewalk with the bike lane. And no parking signs because there is no on-street parking uh within school zone collectors. So that is for, again, that is for Third Street, um, which is a school zone collector. Um, throughout the portion of the subdivision that is onsite, and then the portion that is offsite that the applicant uh is voluntarily developing uh to provide adequate access um along Third Street north of the subdivision. Um, new streets, um, where new streets are created, full street improvements shall be required. Um, three-quarter streets may be approved in lieu of full street improvements on boundary streets when the city finds it practical to require the completion of the other one-quarter street improvement when the adjoining property is developed. Um, the city may allow three-quarter street improvements if the adjoining land on budding the opposite side of the street is undeveloped. And stormwater drainage is provided on the, for, on the non-curb side of the three-quarter street improvements in areas judged by the city engineer to have drainage concerns. So within the subdivision, all streets are considered new streets, um, so that again, we're talking Third Street, we're talking Cleveland, Wilson, Taylor, and Fifth Streets, these are all considered new streets and are therefore reviewed. Uh, through the new street standard, um, like I said, the boundary streets are permitted along the north, which is Cleveland and West Third Street borders of the subject property. Where there is minimal development adjacent to the subject tract and where additional development triggering that remaining quarter street improvement. Uh, is likely to occur in the future when adjacent properties are further developed. Um, it should be noted that while there is um an existing tract on uh tax lot one hundred, which comprises one of the budding properties, that's the, the school property. Um, there is undeveloped property, uh, which is tax lot two hundred, there on the west side, um, that is likely to develop in the future, so for that reason. Uh, staff have determined that a three-quarter street um is acceptable for Cleveland. Um, each uh talks, talks to dead-end streets and states when it appears necessary to continue a street or public accessway into a future subdivision or adjacent acreage. Um, these streets shall be plotted to the boundary of the subdivision. Uh, South Third Street, South Fifth Street, and South Taylor Street dead-end on the border of the subdivision. Uh, staff finds it is appropriate to plot these streets without the turnaround so that when. Uh, developments uh occur to in any direction. Um. These streets are able to provide sufficient access, uh, one specific note with regards to Taylor Street, uh, you may have noticed as a condition. Uh, of approval, um, it was stated that Taylor Street should be extended to the, to the boundary of the tract unless there is a. Um, exactly, extenuating circumstance um that shows otherwise. Uh, since the staff report was released, the applicant has indicated that the property owner, um, at the end of Taylor, uh, has. Essentially asked for the two, there's two big uh oak trees that are on the edge of that border that have been asked. Essentially asked for the two, there's two big uh oak trees that are on the edge of that border that have been asked to be preserved. Um so as part of the subdivision, uh staff finds it reasonable that the that that street be stopped just short in order to preserve those those oak trees. So just a quick note on that. Um I speaks to street names. In this case, um all streets are within the proposed subdivision or extensions of existing city of Carlton. Public streets that are named in accordance with the T S P. Uh grades and curves um are all um. Reviewed at construction plan submittal um and will be approved uh by the city engineer. Um there are no marginal access streets uh which uh or development abutting a existing or proposed arterial arterial or railroad right away. Uh all vision clearance under a criterion L will be maintained on corner lots at the intersection of public streets as a condition of approval. Uh criteria M speaks to spacing between public road intersections. Um which conforms to the access spacing standards. I'll get to access spacing uh under that section, but that is also a condition of approval. Uh criterion N speaks to landscape strips um where uh where mandated. Um I'm gonna go into the landscape strips um in just a second, but they are um proposed where mandated by the city's code. Uh now, the big one is seventeen point six four point oh four O, which speaks directly to right away improvements and widths. So I'm gonna go through each street individually, just so we're clear on exactly what is being proposed. Um South Wilson Street is designated as a new collector in the in the Carlton T S P. New collector streets require a seventy one foot right away, forty six feet of pavement, six foot, six feet sidewalks on six foot sidewalk, excuse me, on either side of the street. Uh of on-street parking, a five-foot bike lane and a five-foot landscape strip. Uh the applicant is proposing um a fifty-eight foot right away, a four forty-six feet of pavement, six foot sidewalks and sidewalk easements. On-street parking, a five-foot bike lane and a five-foot landscaping strip. Uh I want to note for this one that uh the only change is that the applicant is requesting a right-of-way reduction. To allow the sidewalks to be placed in easements um rather than in the public right-of-way. So all required elements are included. The applicant is just requiring or is asking, requesting, excuse me. Um that the planning commission allow those um sidewalks to be placed um in easements rather than in part of the public right-of-way. Um South Third Street uh is designated as a school zone collector. I already went through the standards for those. The development code states that Third Street is only technically a school zone collector between Main Street and Polk Street, because that's only what's developed at this time. So that's as far as that goes. Uh staff finds that continuing Third Street as a school zone collector is appropriate to provide that continuity. Uh and reduce street width in neighborhoods adjacent to the school while aligning with the intent of the T S P. Um so again, designing South Third Street as a school zone collector was recommended by staff during discussions with the applicant at the pre-application stage. Um and I already went over the street sections for those, um but the three quarter street section um meeting the applicable standards of the code is met. Um South Cleveland Street uh is designated as a local street in the Carlton T S P. Uh again, a three quarter street improvement is uh proposed in addition to an asphalt curb and walking path on the north side. Um for a three quarter street, the asphalt curb and path is surplus to what is required. However, uh the developer did work with the school district um to add that to ensure that there was pedestrian access on the school property. Um I'll note that there, we will require a uh agreement um with the city or with, excuse me, with the school district to be submitted with. The final construction plans and prior to the final plat approval uh to show that that shows that the school district. Um has approved the the proposal and and um the the construction plans. Um East Taylor Street and South Fifth Street are both local streets in the Carlton T S P. Uh local street improvements are fifty feet of right away, thirty four feet of pavement, curb and gutter and a five-foot sidewalk. Um the street sections meet all of those requirements um and in additional. Uh a five-foot landscape strip uh is included on the west side. Um uh Fifth Street between Wilson and Cleveland to match the rest of the block. Uh that's the block with the attached homes. South Taylor Street again is shown to stop short of the eastern boundary. Um and again, that is due to those those two mature oak trees that are that are located there. So all requirements in this section are listed as conditions of approval. Uh seventeen point six four point zero five O speaks to modification of right-of-way and improvement widths. Um so this section is the section that allows the city to allow allow modification to the public street standards of section seventeen point six four point oh four O. Which is what I just went over, uh when the following two criteria are satisfied. Um A is that the modification is necessary to provide design flexibility in instances where unusual topographic conditions require a reduced width. Or grade separation of improved surfaces, or two parcel shape or configuration precludes assess accessing a proposed development of the street that meets the full standards. Or a modification is necessary to preserve trees or other natural features determined by the city to be significant to the aesthetic character of the area. Or four, a planned unit development is proposed and the modification of street standards is necessary to provide greater privacy or aesthetic quality of the development. And then B states that the modification is uh shall only be approved if the city finds that specific design proposed. Uh provides adequate vehicular access based on anticipated traffic volumes. Uh so for this modification is important to note here, um that the modification request does not specifically meet the wording of seventeen point six four point zero five O A. And that the request is not due to unusual topographic conditions, partial shape, preservation, natural features or planned unit development. However, because the because the street section, this is this is Wilson Street in particular. Meets the has all the required components, again, the on-street parking, the travel lanes, the landscape strip, the bike lane and the six-foot sidewalk. There is really no functional impact um to the street design that that. The planning commission would be granting granting an exception to the this this, all those uh criteria or all those components are met. Um it should be noted again, and this is this is another relatively significant instance here. Um is that the P U E, the the utility easement overlaps the sidewalk, which is where the city requires the water line to be. Uh so it's provide sufficient room for the water line and the private utilities. Uh the city staff is requiring an eleven-foot P U E along the side of Wilson where the water line is located and that is included as a C O A. Um the second concern here um is that front yard setbacks are measured from the edge of right away, not the edge of easement. So what that means. Is that a setback to a building is measured from uh the street line, not from the edge of the sidewalk closest to homes. Um the city has had some issues um in J R one and two. Um with a uh reduced setback from the garage to the edge of sidewalk. Um because that side, that 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 uh setback is measured from the street, not the sidewalk. Um and what what's happened in the past is because that sidewalk is is um within the required setback. Uh the the distance between the sidewalk to the home has been fifteen feet instead of twenty feet. And then the sidewalk is that additional five-foot setback. So to take care of that issue and to ensure we have a twenty-foot sidewalk or twenty-foot um. Setback between the edge of the sidewalk and the edge of the garage, uh staff is requiring an easement. Um over those, the front yards of those lots that essentially will maintain that. Um that setback and ensure that there's no encroachment by parked cars into the sidewalk like we've seen in other in in other areas where the sidewalk easements have been in place. Um so we find that that's an effective way to mitigate any of the concerns um that may come from that right-of-way modification while also. Um ensuring that all of those required components are met. So I just wanted to be very clear on on what that request is asking for. Um and what measures have been taken to ensure that that request does not have any negative um. Impacts on 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 future homeowners or or existing Carlton residents. Uh private streets um is are under six seventeen point six four point oh six O. There are no private streets included in the subdivision, so it's inapplicable. Uh seventeen point six eight uh speaks to off-street parking and loading um where uh. Uh one, two family dwellings must have two spaces for a unit. Um that's reviewed at at uh building permit level, but uh all spaces are all all. Potential units have the capacity to to support those two parking spaces. Um storm drainage uh requirements are listed in seventeen point seven two and Gordon's, the city engineer's findings are listed under seventeen point seven two in your staff report. Um Gordon is also here, um if you have any questions specific to any of the the public utility. Uh issues um or concerns listed in the staff report, that's seventeen point seven two storm drainage. Seventeen point seven six utility lines and facilities, um and then I believe uh there's one other section related to water. Uh section seventeen point eight four speaks to landscaping installation. Again, this is all uh reviewed at building permit level. Uh I should note that for the single-family attached block, uh the city code requires a site design review application to be submitted. Prior to building permit level, um where the applicant will have to show compliance with section seventeen point eight four, which has to do with landscaping. Um and that comes before the planning commission. So you will see that uh before any of the attached homes are are developed. Uh no screening and buffering is required as all adjacent uses um are residential, um and none of the. Uh screening triggers are met, which includes commercial industrial uses, industrial uses when abutting commercial uses. Service areas and facilities, outdoor storage areas, large parking areas or electronic uh mechanical equipment. Uh section seventeen point eight eight speaks to development standards for land divisions. Uh we discussed criterion A, which is minimum lot area. Uh maximum lot area only comes into play when um a portion of the site. Um a single-family residential use uh has lots with an area double or greater than minimum density of the underlying zone, which the site does not. Um criterion C speaks to lot width and depth. Specifically, uh lots within residential zones where the minimum lot width is forty feet may be permitted to have a width-to-depth ratio of no greater than five to one. So that means the width of the lot um must be uh no more or no less than one-fifth of the depth of the lot. Um the C P O four of the preliminary subdivision plans, which is exhibit C, shows all of the lot dimensions um meeting that standard. Uh there are no flag lots or through lots proposed, so E and F are inapplicable. Uh G speaks to the side lot lines uh and requires that they run at right angles where practicable. Um all front lot lines do run at right angles to the public street. Uh lot grading uh is reviewed is reviewed at the the time of building permits and the construction plan level, um which is can uh included as a as a C O A. Uh utility easements are provided on lots where necessary to accommodate public utilities. Uh there are P U Es across the front edge of of the lots as shown on in exhibit C. And to accommodate the necessary public and private utilities, meaning criterion I. Uh point four oh four O uh speaks to standards for blocks, uh block length um and block perimeter. Uh is required to be uh no longer than six hundred feet in length and fourteen hundred square feet or fourteen hundred feet in width. Um the two blocks to the northwest do slightly exceed that fourteen hundred uh foot um length. That staff finds that because of the orientation of those streets as provided in criterion A, um that minor um. Extension of of that lot of that uh block width is is reasonable and appropriate for this particular application. Uh there are no alleys considered um as part of this application as well. Uh section seventeen point eight eight point oh five O speaks to improvement requirements. All improvement requirements will be required. Um prior uh to recordation of the final plat unless otherwise bonded. Um city's public utility improvements, as I mentioned, are are included as exhibit B. Uh monuments, bench marks uh are are required to be installed and set in intervals as required by the code. Um and will be reviewed on at time of construction plans. Um discussed sanitary sewer, service drainage and the stormwater system. Um is also discussed in exhibit B. Uh moving on. Uh we discussed criteria H and I, which have to do with pedestrian bicycle design standards. Uh there are no bike pit pad specific ways outside of the the bike lanes and the sidewalks that are proposed. Um there is that offsite path that is located on the school district property is proposed. Um that is a a five-foot wide path that will provide uh access to the school. Um access control span standards, uh fifty feet of spacing is required between access points. Um all lots are capable of meeting that access spacing requirement and were viewed upon uh development of the individual lots with those respective driveways. Uh seventeen point one hundred point oh four O speaks to general standards. Uh criterion A um states that that access shall be taken from um for corner lots shall be required to be locate. Located on uh streets with a lower functional classification. Um that is. Uh reviewed at building permit level, um if the if the specific lot in question uh takes access, needs to take access off of. Uh a street with a lower functional classification that a variance will be required at the time of building permit level. The criterion B speaks to arter- arterials of which there are none. Um criterion C speaks to frontage on the state highway system, also of which there are none. Criterion D, uh wherever post-development abuts unplatted developable land, street stubs shall be provided. Um again, those street stubs for those streets uh abutting undeveloped land um are required and are proposed um on the subdivision plan. Uh criterion E speaks to local streets um and the need to connect those with uh adjacent streets. So as I mentioned, Third Street comes from the north, uh Cleveland and Wilson come from the west. Uh and then the other streets are stubbed to the the perimeter boundaries to allow for connection for a future uh development. Uh reasonable access has been uh given um to each of those those streets um as continuations. Um and then new connections um are not proposed in this case. Um a traffic study has been submitted under uh seventeen point one hundred point oh seven zero B. Uh that traffic impact analysis is listed at the end of exhibit D, which is the applicant's narrative. Um a traffic study specifically is required if more than two hundred and fifty trips are generated, which is the case. Believe eight hundred and sixty-eight trips uh are generated and has been prepared, that T I A has been prepared by Lancaster Mobley. Um some takeaways from that uh T I A or that the the study shows that the only two intersections that require traffic control are Yam Hill Street, Main Street. And Pine Street, Main Street, which are both uh Highway forty-seven under the jurisdiction of ODOT. Uh who is currently evaluating those intersections for potential can traffic control. All the intersections evaluated show that they operate at an acceptable level. Um in addition, consideration for school traffic was evaluated, um and it is, you know, known that there's. Considerable lineup and and queuing currently on the streets during the pickup and the drop-off time periods due to. Uh due to the school, however, the study does indicate that the intersections evaluated show that they operate at an acceptable level. Uh and then lastly, uh conditions of approval related to access, uh there will be an access permit required for for the accesses when they are developed. Uh and uh the are, there are no accesses strictly on the state highway system. So again, that that specific piece is inapplicable. Uh before I uh wrap up the staff report, Amy, would it be possible for me to share my screen?
Uh yes, it's already enabled to do.
Oh, it is. Okay. So there are a few um conditions, revisions to conditions that were sent out in the staff report. Um after discussions with the applicant and then internally with staff that I'd like to uh present to you and and show to you. Um apologies for not getting these out. Um you know, before the hearing, we've been working for the last week to to make sure these these meet the needs of the city. So. Uh we just completed them actually today. So again, apologies for for not getting those out to you in a more timely manner. And I do wanna, I would do wanna show them to you so that you are aware of some of the proposed modifications uh to some of the conditions that were listed in your staff report. Can everyone see what's up on the screen currently?
Affirmative.
Great. Um so the first revision uh is to C O A one F. I already mentioned this. Um that that condition uh stated that Taylor Street and the public utilities within Taylor Street shall extend to the eastern boundary. Uh of the subdivision, unless the applicant provides justification showing why Taylor Street cannot be extended. Again, the applicant has indicated that they had some conversations with the name of the property owners who requested that those two. Uh oak trees not be removed, so that stub is just uh to the west of the boundary of the lot. So. Um we are proposing that that condition be removed. Uh are there any questions about that condition before I move on?
That's one of the, that's a street that when that eventually continues at some time in the future, those trees will meet their untimely end at that time.
They would have to be evaluated at that point, but most likely, yes, unfortunately.
Understood. Thank you.
Um the second one is uh C O A one I, uh which is uh related to a storm drainage. Uh this has been switched um the language so that. Uh the storm system will need to be modified to avoid surcharges unless the applicant can provide justification approved to this by the city engineer on deeper pipelines. Uh this may require detention. Um again, Gordon is here, so if you have any questions about that mo- specific modification, feel free to. Feel free to ask uh before I move on to the next one.
I think we're good.
Okay.
Wait, wait, I actually have a question for Gordon about the storm detention. Um. So, um Gordon, I I'm thinking about detention, that would be like a detention pond. Or would it be an underground detention like at the apartment buildings? What would that look like?
Uh they don't have apartments here, so it wouldn't be for the apartment buildings. So. A potential is a pond, a potential is some underground. Uh they could also potentially in the landscape strip. Uh, they could also potentially in the landscape strip put some um storm drainage facilities in there. There is all sorts of options.
Can I clarify? Um, it is, it so that would be a rain garden in the planting strips? That would be an option?
Potentially. It it's it's an option. There's a, in one of the lines, there's a surcharge that we don't think is um acceptable. And so there's a issue with downstream capacity. So we're telling the developer that you have to do something uh so that we don't have that surcharge in that line. And one of the options is detention, and there's all sorts of options for
Right.
doing that. We haven't dictated what option.
Okay, so Gordon, um, I would like to suggest that we could dictate on rain gardens because those would also align with our requirement that the discharge be substantially free of pollution. Um, I just wanna go on record as that's would be my preferred detention. And then I'm done.
All right. Thank you. Um, the third one here um is what I mentioned uh when I was going over the Wilson Street right-of-way um easement with that. Uh, uh, the need to ensure that we don't see encroachment into the sidewalks by parked cars. Um, so the original condition specified that that easement would be a right-of-way easement. Um, the applicant raised some concern that um even if the city would never actually extend the right-of-way, if this wasn't if this was a right-of-way easement, the city would technically have the ability to come into homeowners' lots and extend sidewalk facilities or whatever facilities. So their request essentially was that uh this not necessarily be specified to be a public right-of-way easement, but just be an easement. Um, which would essentially be a no-build easement. Uh, and that no-build easement would maintain that setback so that we did not see encroachment. Um, is that clear or um any clarification? I'm happy to provide.
I see Commissioner uh Madrid has her hand raised.
Uh, thank you, Kyle, and thank you, Gordon, for those clarifications. On page thirty-nine of the packet, seventeen point seven-two dealing with the storm drainage and specifically Han Creek. Uh, the narrative said something about overland. And I just wonder if you could expand on that because I've got limited bandwidth and I actually had notes on my phone and then my iPad didn't work, so I'm on my phone and I can't get to my notes. But if you could just give us a little bit more information about what overland of the storm drainage and how it impacts Han Creek, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Kyle, you want me to answer that?
Uh, sure. I mean, uh, Chair Stewart, if if you'd like to, um there there, I mean, I assume there will be a time for further staff questions. So um, I'm if Gordon wants, if you're, if you prefer Gordon answered that now, that's fine, or we can wait until staff questions, but that's up to you.
Uh, at your leisure, Mr. Monroe. That's fine just to respond now.
Okay, so th- there are no new storm drainage outfalls for this proposed subdivision. It's discharging into the stubs that were uh part of J R two. And there are two discharge locations. Uh, one of them, uh, which was a natural drainage, that's a series of some small pond wetlands. And eventually flows n- north and then across the adjacent property. That was a the natural flow, if you look at the contours of the land, and that's where it's been going. And that will continue, although the will limit the flow, so it does not exceed what it's doing now. So that does flow through those wetlands and then uh overland before it gets to Han Creek. The main discharge uh actually discharges to that small city park. It's on the east side of J R two. And it doesn't discharge directly into Han Creek. It discharges and then flows across the ground. So overland. So across the ground and overland are the same. Essentially the same thing. So it flows across the ground uh through uh an area that does get flooded. Um, and then into Han Creek that flooded when Han Creek floods essentially.
Okay, I appreciate that. So um, and again, just to back up Kyle, I thought you had said to ask questions because uh Gordon was online, so I appreciate if I was speaking out, you know, apologize if I was speaking out of turn. It's just that this did sort of impact a couple of meetings ago, a previous development north of Main Street. Um, and I know that that's a delicate ecological area there. So so Gordon, I I guess um further to that question then is when the the new pump station, which is essentially online, but once, you know, the other pumps arrive or whatever, even during flood times, do you see any of this drainage as is impacting that that pump station?
No, the pump station is is sanitary. And the flooding is storm. Now, oftentimes in really old sanitary systems, um, you you get a lot of leakage into the pipes during a a a storm event.
A flood, okay, so there's.
Yeah. So these pipes are all new, they're PVC, you don't get much what they call inflow or infiltration.
Okay, cuz that was my concern, is that if the flooding would impact any of the sanitary. So you've answered that question. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, did anyone have any questions specific to what is on the screen now, that third uh modification to C O A one K? And again, this is specific to uh that easement that will be along streets where the applicant is proposing. Uh, the sidewalks be placed in sidewalk easements rather than as part of the public right-of-way. And the purpose uh again is to ensure um that the setback from edge of sidewalk to edge of garage mimics a twenty-foot setback uh instead of a fifteen-foot setback, which is something we've had in the past. Um, and this will hopefully eliminate some of the issues we've seen in J R one and J R two where uh parked cars encroach into the sidewalk, and that is the purpose of of this condition.
I'm sure Maya has her hand up. You will come to unmute Commissioner.
Yeah, I just had a question because I thought I'm not terribly clear, um, and it doesn't look like, or maybe I've I've missed that in the packet, but I'm trying to um view where where, when we talk about sidewalk easements instead of being placed in the public right-of-way, is there anything that shows us where they would lie?
Yeah, so so oops, so functionally, so functionally, there's there's no difference. They are just sidewalks and easements. Um, in terms of where they are located, they are along uh Wilson Street primarily. Um, and there are also portions along uh a portion of Third Street and Cleveland Street. Um, and then the rest of the streets are all just in in the right-of-way. Um, so if you look at, uh, I believe it's page P um, oh, four, let me uh, let's see. It's it's in the site plan on the on the area where it shows the cross-section. There's a portion of the site plans that show uh the street cross-sections from a a kind of a a a ground, a ground view. Um, it'll it'll has, it'll show the travel lane, and then it'll show a landscape strip. And then it'll have a little label that says S W E, which means sidewalk easement. Um, and those street sections uh where there is an S W E, that is where um, the sidewalks are proposed to be in those sidewalk easements. Um, is that somewhat clear?
Somewhat. I think maybe I just need to take a second look and make sure that I'm understanding.
Prim- primarily, primarily, it's along Wilson Street. Um, and this is something that was done in J R two as well. Um, but the dis- difference was is in J R two, there was no um, no landscape strips, and then the setback was not maintained, which has caused some issues. So this is a way to um, allow those sidewalk easements to be to to function a little more smoothly without having the negative impacts.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Nordstrom has her little orange hand raised.
So, um, I think I understand, um, right, I mean, the whole idea is that you don't have someone's long truck sticking out in the sidewalk cuz it doesn't fit on the driveway, right? That's kind of the idea.
Essentially, you have a, you have a twenty-foot setback instead of the fifteen-foot setback.
I just, uh, I'm sort of, I mean, I guess I it doesn't make that much difference to me how we what we call it. I do think it's important that that setback, I mean, I understand that issue. Having tried to walk around lots of people's cars that go into the sidewalk, um. But, uh, I guess if you could just clarify, like, wh- what is it that's weird in the code that makes it not easy to enforce that in the regular code?
Right, so, um, the edge of public right-of-way is where the setback is measured from. So in this case, the public right-of-way uh ends really where the the landscape strip is. So if the set, if if someone was to wanna build a home and they were to submit a building permit, they would not be required to maintain a twenty-foot right-of-way from the edge of the sidewalk. They would have to maintain it from the edge of the right-of-way. Um, and when sidewalks are in the right-of-way, that's the same thing. Um, but since they're not, there's the six-foot sidewalk essentially. That is then subtracting from what would normally be a twenty-foot setback, which acts as essentially then only a fifteen-foot setback, which creates that issue. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I guess I'm sort of maybe tangential to this. Is this something we should be aware of for like rewriting of the code, so these don't have to be kind of piecemealed together?
Yeah, so so a lot of, a lot of codes I've worked with have have specifications for where the setbacks uh are measured from. Um, a lot of times, I mean, it depends on the type of easement, right? Some some easements, it doesn't matter because they are you know, public utility easements or something like that where it 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 doesn't really matter one way or the other, but it's certainly something to consider. Um, I've certainly seen it done in other places where um the the setback stated to be measured from edge of sidewalk rather than from edge of right-of-way, just to, you know, avoid situations similar to this, yes.
Right. I mean, I I I appreciate, um, staff, you know, kind of paying attention to this and trying to find a way of of encoding it. Um, but I also think we we wanna make sure that that doesn't have to be something that staff has to come up with a way to encode it. So thanks.
See, there's one, one more question from Commissioner Madrid.
So just to clarify, um, Kyle, based on Commissioner Nordstrom's um comments there, this will not codify, but at least for this development, it will ensure that the right-of-way is measured from the edge of the sidewalk, not from the curb, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Okay, so again, thank you to you and the city engineer for catching all of these little loopholes, and I would certainly echo Commissioner Nordstrom's um concern that we codify this into the city code. Thank you.
I will note that that was actually um your new planner, Scott White, who noticed that. So that was
Well.
Credit to him. Be aware, um, and and we'll be looking out for that kind of stuff in the future. Um, so is there any more questions on that one?
I think we can pre- to the proceed to the next one, sir. Thank you.
Um, the next one is a pretty straightforward uh uh condition, which uh this is a code requirement that states that all lots with varying functional classifications shall take access from the street with a lower classification. So for instance, if you have a corner lot where one of the streets is a local street and one of the streets is a collector's street, um, the code mandates that um, you know, you take that 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 lot takes access or its driveway comes from that local street. Now, in some situations, that's not practical, whether it's, you know, because of the shape of the lot or the amount of frontage. Um, so this has been slightly modified to say, um, that same requirement, except that, um, it'll be, you know, you're able to submit approved variance, which is assumed, but this is just making it very clear. Um, so if if there was someone who wanted to come on, come in and build the driveway on on a lot with the higher functional classification, they would have to submit a variance prior to the building permit issuance. So that's what this is showing. Uh, any questions there?
Just, just one quick uh question there, Kyle. So you had previously noted, and I noted in going through the packet, there are no flag lots in this proposed development. And so with that, typically, I mean, I'm not saying all encompassing, but that would typically be a condition of flag lots, would it not?
Um, well, a flag lot, it would be, I, it would be a through lot, I think, is what you're what you're referring to. So a through lot is when you have a lot that has the the front end of the lot has frontage on one street, and then it goes all the way through the block to the other side of the street. Um, so in that case, yes, that would be an instance where this would apply. The primary instance where it applies is is corner lots, like I said, where you have a corner lot on, say, Wilson and and Cleveland where there's two different classifications. But maybe the lot is far wider on on one side, so you'd prefer to put your driveway on that side. So that's where this. Yeah.
Sure. And then also too, um, I noticed there's no duplexes or apartments planned for this development. But theoretically speaking, say if you had a duplex on a corner lot, you could conceivably have one driveway on one street and one driveway on another street. So again, kudos to you and all the planners and the engineers for catching this. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, next one. Um, so this is uh one I really wanna point out, uh, this is something we we've we've certainly dealt with in the past. Um, the current condition, uh, as in your staff report, reads that the biological improvements to the city of Carlton wastewater treatment plant shall be completed and operational before um, uh, this development can be accepted, the plat can be approved, but no homes may be sold or connected to the system. The intent of this was to say, oh, the applicant can submit the the final plat for review. Um, but it cannot be actually be recorded until um those wastewater treatment plant upgrades are are complete. The reason for this is because we had uh issues uh in the past when we allowed the um, with the Han Creek pump station, um, where we had a similar condition, but then we had citizens or home buyers who bought homes and were blaming the city for, um, you know, delaying their financing on their homes. So the 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 clarification here, the alteration of this condition just outright states that this improved, that these improvements must be completed prior to the final plat being recorded. Um, and that's just essentially just a straight up, we're gonna avoid all situations where people are complaining to the city that the city's holding up their 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 home purchase from closing. So um, that's the purpose of of this uh uh condition. I will note that the applicant obviously is then put in a slightly uncomfortable position if if the approval was to expire before those uh biological upgrades are complete. Um, so they do have the option to request an extension. Um, for for up to a year uh by the planning commission if if that becomes an issue.
Kyle, just a a a quick suggestion, because I've been burned by this in other situations, nothing to do with Carlton. But contractually speaking, the difference between no homes may be sold and no homes shall be sold is binding. So I would, I would make the suggestion that the word may be replaced with shall, shall not be sold.
Well, so in this case, we're just outright stating that the final plat has to be recorded first. So if there's no lots, no lots can can or shall or may be sold because there's no physical lots. Um, so the 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 modified condition doesn't even allow the the plat to be recorded until, um, that those improvements are complete.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, any more on on number five there, or three A, I guess? Nope. Um, whoops, number C O A five here speaks to an extension. This is just a housekeeping item. Um, I use a template for staff reports that the city's been using for a while, um, and I noticed it had not been updated um, to allow for that planning commission extension request. So the city offers two paths towards an extension. It's kind of weird. Um, number one, uh, if if in a, if a subdivision plat, preliminary subdivision plat is approved, um, the approval is good for eighteen months, and the city manager is allowed to give a six-month extension. There's a second option where the planning commission is allowed to give up to a year ex- extension. Um, so that essentially means if this applicant needs an extension for whatever reason, um, they can come to the planning commission and say, hey, we need this extension, we'll grant this extension. So I just added that option on to the extension clause in in C O A five. Um, any questions with that? Yep. All right. And then the last one, um, is uh something uh we talked with the uh school district about and uh, Commissioner Terrell, I appreciate you reaching out to us this week as well about this. Um, essentially, the the school district, that path on the north side of the the subject tract on the south side of the school district property um, is going to require an agreement um between the developer and the school district to develop that path because it is on the school district's property. So this added condition essentially just mandates that a condition or agreement be reached. Um, that will likely include an easement uh to allow that 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 path to be developed as shown on the plans. So that has just been added. Um, and I spoke and, you know, I communicated the email with with the superintendent um, and communicated that that would be a a condition of approval on 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 the subdivision. So any questions about that?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, so to be clear. If that path is built, it will involve the public, the school district. Conferring a um easement to the developer to not. Uh, to allow him to not build a sidewalk on his side.
Um, what do you mean to allow him to not?
Well, so I mean, an easement is essentially um. Not only a devaluation of the property, but it's also um. I I mean, you can't just confer public assets to a for a private. For profit entity without the oversight of the school board, I shouldn't think.
Right, so so.
Help me understand, because this, because they would be granting an easement to the developer.
Yeah, so so this was something that.
No, yeah. Kyle, can I jump in? This is not an easement to the developer. It's the school would be giving a public access easement. And that would be where they would put this asphalt path, so it's a public access easement, it's not for the developer. And that does not limit the future. Completion of that three quarter street.
Right, and 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 to give a little more background on that, the the developer was originally planning on on constructing a sidewalk on that side of the street. And the reason why that didn't really work is because that limits. The remaining one quarter of that three quarter street from being developed in the future, because then you'd have to tear up the curb and gutter. Um, it would have, you'd have to remove the sidewalk and relocate the sidewalk, it could infect affect drainage patterns. Um, so that's why we recommended going with with the path rather than a a full design like you normally have with the complete street.
So so to clarify further. It would be a public, I understand that it would be a public access easement. But nevertheless, it would be on school property, so essentially the school is gifting somebody, the city, a public access easement. Which um, I mean, that's, yeah, and so um that I I can't even, I I can't imagine why the why. How that could happen without full school board, school board review and assigned document. And if we would approve the street as constructed and then school board says, well, why would we give the city this gift? And devalue our property with an easement. Um, especially considering there would this, the site is developed as a school campus and there's no plans to develop it. Why and why in in heaven's name would the school district agree to just devalue their property that way and give away? I mean, we as as residents and taxpayers support the school district, so essentially it's giving. Our public assets to. Just giving them away, so that that's a confusing point to me and um. I have some great concerns about um not requiring full street improvements on a new street. Um, and I noticed the street does a little jag right there to to abut the school property. And it would appear that the street could be constructed fully with full street improvements on their own purchased property.
Um, well, I'll I'll let the, I know the developer has, the applicant has some some history with those discussions that I'll let them discuss a little further. But again, the reason why. I I don't believe there is actually, as designed, I don't believe there is actually space to construct the full.
Well, right, as designed, obviously, they would have to redesign.
Yeah, so but but this this condition, what this adds is requiring that agreement that that. You're discussing now, um and they have been in discussions with the school district, um or this wouldn't have been proposed, so um it is not just a. Out of coming out of nowhere um proposal, um that has been something that's been discussed.
But there is no, there is no, because I actually, I think when I requested my, in my email, I think I asked for a signed document from the superintendent, but he wasn't willing to give that.
Uh, they don't have, they don't have one yet. Um, they will, this this is what this condition would would mandate is before that the the final construction plans would be approved. The city would have to see evidence of that that.
Okay, well, I have more comments on that later and I'll I'll cede my time right now for later.
Okay, well, that is all I had um on staff court, sorry, that took a lot longer than usual, but I I wanted to make sure that that you all had. Um, kind of a a full understanding of what the proposal was and and why some certain elements were in the staff report, so.
Real quick, Kyle, I think we might have one more question on this, we might have one more question from Commissioner Nordstrom on this specific uh revised condition.
Two.
Um, it's 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 kind of following up on Suzie's um. That, I guess, so I, if I understand it, part of the issue, so part of the issue is as designed, there's no space for a second sidewalk. And part of the issue is that there's the undeve- undeveloped um court, like that quarter lot, right?
Right, so, sorry, go ahead.
But I guess what I'm kind of concerned about is I know that like the idea is like, well, this leaves possible the future development of a sidewalk there. But who would develop that sidewalk? Like, it seems like if the developer doesn't do it, it's either the school district. I mean, that little quarter lot is gonna, or that that other piece of the lot, they're gonna develop the whole sidewalk, like who? And like the school district is public, you know, taxpayer. I know that 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 other lot is at least currently owned by a nonprofit, like what's um? Like, it seems to me we're saying we will never have a sidewalk there. And that, I think the longer term is what really concerns me about that. Issue, and it I like. I would love for us to find a better solution that doesn't mean, yes, someday someone's gonna develop that, when I say who, no, nobody's gonna develop.
Sure.
Commissioner Madrid, do you have one final question regarding the uh revised condition of approval?
Um, it does, and I and I think mine is very brief, um if we were to approve as proposed. Um, who on this path or easement? Who would be the person maintaining that? Would it be the school district? Would it be the city of Carlton?
Uh, that would be something, that would be something that would be in that agreement presumably.
Presumably, but we don't have any assurances from either party as to once the asphalt's down, then what?
Right.
Okay, thank you, Kyle.
Yep.
And and Kyle, as written, if there is no resulting agreement. These guys are gonna be forced to do, the condition of approval is if there is no agreement that details these things. They're gonna have to come back and get a revised approval from us.
That's right.
So.
But I, what I, another thing I want to note again, as the these are offsite improvements, so they are technically voluntary improvements. Um, so the applicant is essentially volunteering to to, you know. Construct this path and enter into agreement with the city or with the school district, excuse me.
So to the extent that we we can't understand at the moment. What the terms of those agreements are, uh uh that the 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 city, excuse me, the school and the school board is going to have to authorize. To their satisfaction, the approval, uh or demonstrate the approval of this document, so. Um, I think that it it sounds like that was the underlying thought process, we'll hear from the applicant to hopefully, I I think you you're right, they'll give us some context on. Why this resolution um is moving forward, but thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
Um, I I think let's reserve any other questions now, if anybody has any more, we'll save them for our. Um, and our our grilling of Kyle towards the end, but we'll let Kyle finish the staff report and then we'll take a brief recess.
That is actually all I have.
Okay, um, do you want to just go over your conclusions or recommendations, or do you think it's sufficient in?
So, yes, so based on those revised conditions and the other findings, uh staff recommends approval.
Excellent.
Yeah.
It is just approaching, or it's just turned seven twenty and ahead of our applicant's presentation, I'd like just to let everybody take a a five minute break, uh recess, get some water. And we'll just resume here in five minutes at seven twenty-five P M. Sound good, bye, everybody? All right.
Thank you.
Enjoy the break. Yep.
Anthony, I can't hear you at all. Can anybody else hear Anthony?
No.
Nobody can hear him.
City Hall cannot hear you.
You could you?
Hear me?
Now we can.
You can hear me now?
Now we can hear you.
I'm sorry about that, I was just practicing my ventriloquism. Um, okay, so I'll restate that again, we are going to recommence our. Um, uh proceeding tonight, we have our recording is back on, I just said thank you to Mr. Jenkins for presenting that. Uh, detailed staff report to us, and now we will commence with the applicant's report and presentation, it seems like someone from S S J H is here. So you, Mr. Hoyt, to make application or presentation on behalf of the applicant.
Well, actually, the folks at A K S are gonna kick things off and run you through kind of the more technical aspects of the application, some of its benefits to the city, both in terms of. Connectivity and uh finances and uh. And I'm gonna kind of wrap up with some of the more technical legal things on the backside, we've done a lot of work with Kyle early. Earlier and a lot of hard work this afternoon, I want to say thank you to him for, but there's still a couple of issues that I think we're gonna need to rassle about a little bit and. I'll do that at the end, once you've had a chance to kind of walk through the process of the project with uh A K S.
Understood, thank you, sir. Uh, A K S, the floor is yours. Amy, could you help them with the unmute, please?
So we're, we're getting our uh slideshow up and it looks like we're sharing screens here. Um, do you want to do it, get it in slideshow mode, Jackie? It's on the bottom, right? There you go, down, that, yep.
Sorry about that.
That. Can everybody see? The uh introductory page of our slideshow?
Affirmative.
Great, okay, perfect, thank you for your patience with that, these are always a little bit uh challenging to get started. Um, want to thank you Chair Stewart, members of the planning commission and city staff. My name is Chris Goodell, I'm with A K S. And our address is one two nine six five Southwest Herman Road, Swalton, Oregon nine seven zero six two. We are uh one of the members of the team that you'll see right here that uh helped put together this application. Uh, that we're talking about here this evening. Um, first off, we wanted to thank Kyle and and Gordon, city staff, for the positive staff report. And uh. Appreciate that, and we have a brief PowerPoint slideshow right here, we're gonna talk a little bit about the project and we're going to. Share some graphics that uh Kyle didn't have before him, but Kyle did a very thorough job on his presentation, so. We are not gonna go into as great a detail on the street sections and whatnot like Kyle did, but. We are gonna talk about some of the project highlights. And then when I'm done with that, as Mark mentioned a second ago, I'm gonna hand it over to Mark, who's gonna talk about about a few different issues that he wanted to uh. Discuss with the planning commission, so we'll get going right here. So this is the site, you can see it's uh on the, it's the terminus, the southern terminus, the South Third Street. Adjacent to the elementary school. It's approximately sixteen acres in size and it's owned residential medium density R two. So just a couple of the highlights that we wanted to cover is that this application is for housing. And it's got a variety of housing types in that it has attached. Homes and detached homes and and Kyle did mention earlier that the city had. Updated their code recently to provide for single family attached homes and and this application here is a. A product of that new code provision, the new code provisions, so. What we're gonna talk about a little bit here is the interconnected transportation network, which in this case includes several streets. That are shown here, let's see, as far as the streets, they also have a, you know, everyone has a sidewalk. Uh, provides bicycle circulation where appropriate. Has all the utilities that are necessary and provides them to offsite properties to allow their future growth. And it also has a very important uh water line that loops to uh the school, provide them the necessary fire flow that uh that they need. So this is similar to the last slide, but highlights uh the pedestrian and and actually the bike lanes that are on, gonna be on East Wilson Street and. South Third Street, so those are highlighted in yellow and you can see that. In addition to the uh bike lanes, there'll be, it also shows the, let me say the. Sidewalk on East Cleveland Street that was discussed earlier and I and I'll show another slide here that shows that in a little bit more detail. And the offsite sidewalk and bike lane going up Third Street to the north to the school property. So this is a uh more or less the city's T S P and how this site. Provides streets that are required or that are shown on the city's T S P map, including Wilson Street, Cleveland Street and Taylor Street. And uh as well as Third Street. So what's interesting about this slide is it shows Cleveland Street actually. For the T S P cuts through, it's half on the school property. And we thought that it didn't make a lot of sense to have half of the street on the school property, so we've actually shifted the right of way of Cleveland Street to the south. To provide for three quarters of the street to be constructed with this project. And leave a quarter for the future in the school to the north, rather than a half, this this is assuming the the vast majority of that uh improvement. So this here is a timeline that we provided to the planning commission. Um, when we were discussing the zone change application. For J R Meadows number three, which is this project here, so that was back in September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. And it showed these estimated timelines on the. Top of the page where things were public improvements that the city was working on, and then on the bottom of the slide, it taught, it shows what. Where uh the private subdivision, the process it was gonna go through in the timeline associated with that. And as you can see, it's taken longer for the the public improvements projects to get completed. And so actually, the original idea was to have this subdivision application submitted. Uh, in twenty twenty-two and and have improvements start in twenty twenty-three and obviously uh for, because of the improvements. The city's improvements not being able to be completed, we've held back on the land use applications uh considerably and but. Can't hold back much longer, so um submitting here at this point. So that kind of just describes. The process that, for those of you who weren't on the planning commission or may not have remembered when the, how this all started. So I mentioned uh Mark Hoyt was gonna talk a little bit here, let's keep that right where we had it and uh. Mark, go for it. Mark, you're muted. My apologies, uh, thank you, appreciate that. Mark Hoyt, Sherman, Sherman, Johnny and Hoyt, six nine three Chameca Street Northeast, Salem, Oregon nine seven three oh one. Working with the A K S uh engineering on behalf of the applicant Chad Davis Construction. Want to say thank you to everybody, I also want to say a particular thank you to Kyle, uh he will be missed, it sounds like maybe that's a shared sentiment at the city as well. But I've also had some opportunities to interact with the incoming planner Scott White and I'm looking forward to working with him as well. Uh, before I move on to the primary focus of what I'll talk about, which are the conditions, I wanted to talk a little bit about the sidewalk. Because I heard Commissioner Terrell and Commissioner Nordstrom express some concerns about that, very legitimate and real concerns. Uh, but I want to highlight where this started and where it ended up. And where it started was with the transportation system plan that actually designated half of that street to be constructed on the school's property. And as part of the design, that didn't seem realistic or appropriate. And so the developer actually took that into account and moved the the street south, giving up developable property in order to put a three quarter street improvement on the development side. And it was the developer's original improved proposal that that three quarter street improvement would include a full curb and sidewalk paid for and installed by the developer. When that approval, when that concept went in, there was some pushback. Folks preferred a less permanent improvement. So in the event that there was some later development, there would not be as difficult or as expensive a tear out process to remove the developer paid improvement. And as noted by Kyle, that's an offsite improvement. It's not required by the developers. A voluntary improvement being included as part of the kind of connectivity, this project will help facilitate for the city connecting those developments that are
Am I the only one that can't hear anything except Garbo?
Yes, Jim, we can. We're hearing everything straight. Are you able to hear me? Jim, it looks like you. There might be some technical issues on your end. I think we're all hearing Mr. Hoyt loud and clear.
Should I continue?
Mr. Hoyt, go ahead and continue. Mr. Bailey steps back up. We'll take a pause. Thank you, sir.
Fantastic. Thank you. So the purpose of that was to facilitate the connection of the properties to the east of the school, allowing pedestrian bicycle circulation without having to use the main streets to go through the subdivisions and access the school site. And so the improvement would be paid for by the developer. The school has been very cooperative. No one has signed an agreement yet, not because there's any dispute or there are any issues. The agreement hasn't been signed because there's not a final design and there's no approval. So no one knows exactly what would be being approved. So that hasn't progressed to that point. While we, this is an improvement that has to be built on someone else's property. And with any improvement that has to be built on someone else's property, they have to consent to that. So just the fact that it has to be constructed requires the school district consent. While we are less than, we can live with the requirement that it be a written agreement. That's already kind of baked into the design. But this is not something where the developer is trying to push on to the school district's property. In fact, it's a place where they've moved off the school district's property, trying to minimize the impact of the future. If that property is ever developed and it may never be, we don't know. And that actually, at the request of others, the developer has backed away from a more permanent construction that was proposed with the initial design. So I do want to highlight as well that this will loop the city's water system. And I think those of you that are new to the planning commission may not have been engaged in some of the projects where frankly, there just wasn't enough water pressure to fight fires in the city of Carlton. Not for any anybody's fault, but just aged infrastructure and the inability to deliver that water pressure. And that resulted in water being stored in subdivisions. It resulted in homes being sprinkled. Right now, the school there does not have sufficient pressure for fighting fires for a commercial structure, which is school is considered to be. This looping of the system will actually increase the pressure to the school enough that its firefighting flow pressures available to it will actually match what are required by codes. There's a substantial improvement and benefit that comes to the city in that regard as well. And I could in some of the prior things that have been talked about, this is a project that will definitively provide significant tax benefits, significant revenue. More importantly, it implements the city's recently adopted code for multifamily structures. And so we see all those things as very positive things, looking for the city to kind of grow and develop and continue to blossom into the wonderful place that Carlton has been and continues to be. So with that said, I want to turn to kind of a quick recap of some of the work we've been able to accomplish and then kind of wrap up with one of the open questions that we think is still out there. Again, I've talked about it before, but I want to compliment staff. Conditioner one, condition one F regarding extending the street all the way to the end of Taylor Street being deleted so that we can leave the existing oak trees in place. We very much support that deletion. The stormwater modification, the condition that was worked out between the applicant's engineers and the city engineer. Everyone is now comfortable with that language going forward. The setback language change. I had a very good conversation with Kyle about that. Everybody's on the same page. Everybody wants to make sure that there's 20 feet there. There's no dispute that that needs to be done and we're happy to do that. The language has been proposed as language that we believe we can work with very effectively, particularly after my conversations with Kyle. So we're very comfortable with that. The modification of the driveway access, we're very comfortable with that as well. Language was added to allow the conditions because one of the challenges that would exist is we believe that at least right now, all of the detached structures could be constructed and can be constructed to meet that condition. It is possible that you would not be able to construct an attached structure so that you can access the driveways off of the lower classified street. And so it may be necessary for variance there that language allows for that possibility. That's something that this commission will have a chance to review when this project comes back before it as part of the site plan review. And so you would see that as it goes forward. And it would allow for if in the event necessary reconfiguration of, I think at this point, we've narrowed it down to possibly one lot where there might be a need for that. But we appreciate that condition being modified to do that as well. Talked a little bit about the condition requiring written permission of the school district. We're comfortable with that as well, based on the working condition with them. The place where we have a little bit of a rub is the condition three A. There was an original condition three A proposed that Kyle had on the screen that talked about whether the project was approved. And if it was approved, would it be? Trying to pull it up here. The original condition three A provided that biological improvements, the city of Carlton wastewater treatment plant shall be completed and operational before the homes from this development can be accepted. The plat can be approved, but no homes may be sold or connected to the system. Timing on this got a little more compressed than like, but it's my understanding that Monty spoke with Representative AKS Engineering spoke with the city manager just before the hearing started, and she indicated that she was comfortable with the plat being able to be recorded so long as no homes could be sold. And our proposal is that we go to the original condition three A as drafted by staff and modify it slightly to say that the homes for this development can be accepted and plat recorded. And the plat can be approved, but no homes shall be sold, taking up on the recommendation of one of the planning commissioners or connected to the system. We understand and we recognize that when the city was cooperative and facilitated the construction of homes while we waited for the Hon Creek Pump Station to come online, that some homeowners got a little excited and understandably, right, reached out to the city and that that created some turmoil for the city. We do not want to create that situation. However, it is important to look at what is actually being done with the condition as it is proposed by staff. The rule of law, it's one of the the kind of fundamental concepts of Oregon land use is you don't get to move the goalposts. The goalposts are what they are when you file the application. And we very much support and agree with that. Part of the reason this application was held was to allow the city to implement its zoning that would allow attached structures that are now being proposed so that we could meet that need in the city. And those are the goalposts that we applied under. However, a condition is being opposed imposed that in effect, this project can't go forward until the wastewater treatment plant is completed. And in effect, what that really does is create what's called a moratorium, which is a prohibit prohibition on building. You are saying you can't build homes in the city of Carlton. And in and if a moratorium is declared, whether in directly or indirectly, there are certain consequences that come along with that that cities have to implement. And the city of Carlton has not done that. And as proposed, what the condition really does is say, we're approving this. But if our wastewater treatment plant is delayed, as the pump water, as the pump station was delayed, your application may expire. And should that happen, if the goalposts have changed, well, our goalposts are gone. And they're not gone because our the applicant wasn't diligent. They're gone because the city for, you know, would be at COVID, be it public contracting, be it a myriad of, you know, hundreds of things that delay construction projects, both public and private. If the city can't complete the project in a timely manner, then the approval will essentially potentially lapse. And yes, it can be extended. But that's a discretionary extension by the planning commission. The planning commission can modify or change those terms. And there's nothing that this planning commission can do necessarily, other than one thing I'll talk about in a minute, that could or would impact a future planning commission's decision. And so the net impact of that is that effectively, the the approval hopefully is not. But if construction does not progress as intended, it could be what's illusory. And Kyle highlighted that when he said, well, this puts the applicant or could put the applicant in a difficult position. Because if the plant doesn't come in on time, you can't record the plat. We're not asking to build homes. We recognize that the treatment treatment plant needs to be able to do that. But we need to be able to complete the construction process or not construction, but the plating process that completes this particular approval under this particular set of rules. And you know, the prohibition on sale of homes is sufficient to do that. It does not allow the homes to be sold. People can't call and negotiate and ask that they be done. We are happy to accept a condition that says you cannot sell homes until that wastewater treatment plant is done. But if we're not allowed to go forward because of that, you are effectively imposing a moratorium. And that comes with consequences that the city either has to accept or not impose that moratorium. That means that condition could not be imposed. Or there's a bigger problem here that we have to address. We don't want to create that problem. We want to avoid it. We want to work with the city. But we can't do that if we're in a position where the plat can't be recorded. One thing that we would like to propose as a mitigating factor on this as well is that the way the city code is written, we believe that this planning commission has the authority to, as part of an approval tonight, grant a conditional, I want to emphasize conditional, one year extension in advance. The concept being this, if the wastewater treatment plant improvements are completed before this plat, before the 18 months that this approval is valid, there would be no extension. The obligation would be on the applicant, either complete the public improvements and record the plat or as allowed by condition four, bond the public improvements and record the plat. Because he could go forward with the project because the wastewater treatment plant is online. However, and we all need to recognize that whether the wastewater treatment plant comes online is completely outside the applicant's control. We're not building it. We're not funding it directly. It is a city project that's under city control and we recognize the city doesn't control its contractors and doesn't control the speed of construction. But just as you can't control the construction, we can't control the city's construction of that project either. So if we get to the 18 months without the wastewater treatment plant being approved, that that would then automatically trigger a one year extension from the that's already approved by the planning commission, which would allow up to two and a half years for completion of that project. We would be happy to consider a modification of that to say, or if the wastewater treatment plants improved, you either have to record the plat or bond and improvements and record the plat within a specified period of time that gives us a reasonable amount of time to get that accomplished. But by doing that, it effectively provides hopefully enough cushion that we're not going to be in a position that we have an approval that really frankly becomes illusory because the city conditioned the ability to complete that approval on something we have no control over. And such a condition where we have no control and our ability to complete the approval is dependent on the city creates a situation where the goalposts can be moved and that's just not permissible under Oregon law. So we'd like to, our understanding is the city manager is okay with that. And it is unfortunate that this all took place so quickly and so late this afternoon that those things weren't able to be communicated. I don't know if she's reachable at this point in time or not to confirm that. It'd be good if she could be. But our proposal is that we go back to the originally written condition three A. Provide that before homes for this development can be accepted, the plat can be approved and recorded, but no homes may be sold or connected to the system. And just add that language and recorded, but no homes shall be sold or connected to the system until completed. And that would provide the city the protections it needs that its wastewater treatment plant won't be overtaxed. It provides our client with that additional one year extension, the applicant, the ability to have the goalposts fixed as the law requires and balances the the interest we respect to the city with the rights that our our client has in terms of being able to develop this property, provide the connectivity, provide the water flows and provide the improvements that this will bring to the city. And so we'd happy to answer any questions. Would like the opportunity. We'll talk in rebuttal if need be about some of these things. But wanted to make sure that we got those things out for consideration and discussion as part of our initial presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt. Much appreciated. Before we go on to questions from any commissioners, I wanted, I think I see Shannon there with the city team. And if Shannon has any comments that she'd like to just supplement to that to inform the commissioners.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I wanted to just clarify what I actually said in the phone call that was just before this meeting was that because as Kyle mentioned, there was a lot of back and forth just before the meeting that and a lot of third party conversations that we're all trying to catch up on, that what needed to happen at this meeting was an opportunity for discussion and clarification. So I just, again, there was a lot going on. I just want an opportunity for everybody to discuss and be comfortable with anything that was decided tonight or at another time. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. I think before Jim, did you, did you have a technical issue or did you have a question for the applicant?
Not a technical issue, actually more question for Kyle.
Understood. Go ahead and ask him now.
Kyle, I would like a response into what we just heard from you. You're muted.
I got you. Yeah. So the reason why the condition was specified is is like Mark mentioned, we had some issues come up with with JR two when the planning commission modified the original condition of approval from 2020 to allow homes to be sold in JR two. I believe it was 20 homes or excuse me, built to be built under building permit approval. And what ended up happening is that essentially, the city started getting calls from those home buyers and Shannon or Amy can can add a little more because they were the ones who had to, you know, talk through those phone calls, unfortunately. Where the home buyers were saying, well, the city is holding up our purchase. We want to move or we want to get our financing complete. And they were, you know, there was a lot of blaming of the city going around there that caused a lot of issues at that time. So from from my perspective, and this is really you know, about ensuring, again, that the the project is able to move forward within, you know, where they have a certain amount of comfort level where, you know, the plat can get recorded without that expiration while also ensuring the city both doesn't have issues with the capacity of its existing system and doesn't receive those, you know, calls from home buyers. So from my perspective, the best compromise, and I believe, believe Mark mentioned this, would be for the planning commission to authorize a conditional extension if the excuse me, if the if the plat wasn't able to be recorded within that additional 18 months because that would then give the extra buffer to the applicant and that assurance that would essentially say, well, if the city, the the project takes a little longer than than the the 18 months or the the well, if the city, the, the project takes a little longer than, than the, the eighteen months or the, 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 uh, two years that, that, that's, that's authorized, then that extension would kick in and that would protect the applicant from having to come back to, um, a subdivision or excuse me, a planning commission in the future that may not want to approve it or may have different ideas or, or thoughts or concerns or whatever it may be. Um, so that would protect the applicant against that while also ensuring the city didn't get any weird, um, you know, annoying questions or over the system. So that, that would be, um, and I'm just, again, I'm just speaking from my perspective here. Gordon might have other thoughts, Sharon might have other thoughts, but, um, from my perspective, that would be the preferred outcome would be if, if, and the most, I think the most reasonable compromise would be if that extension was authorized at this meeting, should the application be approved.
Thank you, Kyle.
All right, um, at this point, I'm going to open the public testimony. Um, we could probably end the screen share at this point, so then we can, um, bring all of us back up, uh, into a little bit larger format. There we go. Thank you. Um, we will commence the next phase. We'll have three minutes for any, uh, members of the public to make a statement. I'll, I'll be keeping track of that time and I'll interrupt you or I'll just give you a kind of a thirty second heads up. If you're getting closer, running over that three-minute period. We'll start with proponents, followed by opponents, any neutral undecided people who just would like to make a comment. Uh, and then we'll, um, if there are any principal proponents, not the applicant, we'll allow them to make a rebuttal. So, um, in addition to the written comments that we have received that were circulated by city staff this afternoon, is there anybody out in Zoom land or at the city facilities who would like to speak as a proponent for the proposed subdivision applicant? Or application? I trust there's none in city hall because Shannon's not waving and saying stop. So, um, I see a, what looks like a hand clap from Marie Frugé. Did you have anything you wanted to say, Marie, or is it just the general supportive citizenry?
Hi, I would, I guess I pushed the wrong button. I guess I'm way behind on this, but I was just kind of wondering if the applicants could ever consider removing a house on a block for some green space or some areas for green. And, and why is there no artistic changes? Why is it just always the same old thing? I mean, let's get some changes, something fresh. I just don't understand why everything's got to be ticky tacky squares in a, in a square. It's very, I know it may seem weird, but it's just, it's time for some changes. I'm for different housing trends, like something for seniors and single-story houses, maybe tiny houses. There's so many other things. I'd like to see applicants working on that and that's about it.
Thank you, Marie. Um, I will, when, we'll have the opportunity here a little bit for any more statements from the applicant. But I think just a broad statement is that, um, to, tonight's, we're, we're specifically reviewing the criteria. Uh, some of the design review components are going to be at a later time, uh, following the subdivision application. But to the extent that that specific inquiry has to do with the criteria that are before the planning commission tonight, we'll give, uh, Mr. Hoyt and the AKS team a chance to, uh, comment further. Anybody else speaking as a proponent for and support of the application this evening? I'm going to classify that last one as kind of a neutral or, um, uh, not on either side. Um, seeing none, is there anybody, or is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application, uh, the subdivision application this evening? You can raise your hand in Zoom land. Um, you can unmute yourself or otherwise make yourself known at this time or forever hold thy peace. Um, seeing none, um, and at this point, I think I'll just move on to our next phase. Uh, because there's nobody else that just wants to make a comment, neutral undecided. Seeing none, we'll move on to questions of, um, uh, to the floor from the planning commission. Um, so at this point, do we have any specific questions that, uh, any planning commissioner would like to make to our applicant? I see, uh, Commissioner, uh, Madrid, I like to just go in alphabetical order just because it keeps my relatively weak mind organized. Uh, so I'll just start with Commissioner Amaya.
That's if I have any questions that haven't already been answered.
Excellent. Yeah, that's just if you have any, any specific questions that you'd like to direct to the applicant.
I do not. I think, uh, Commissioner Nordstrom and Commissioner Terrell did an excellent job of leading out everything I needed to hear.
Excellent. Yeah, that's, that's why it's nice to be at the end of the alphabet for me. Um, Commissioner Bandy.
I'm good for now.
Excellent. Um, Commissioner Gek.
I'm wondering about, I, I feel, still feel concerned about the north side of Cleveland Street, knowing that kids will be, take the shortest route and five feet path doesn't seem to be adequate. And I'm wondering about the width of the street on Cleveland Street and whether there's any leeway to make a broader than five-foot path. Is there any, I know that isn't, um, I'm just trying to think out of the box on how to make that safer in that area for kids who will probably not go all the way to Wilson Street to find a safe path. There isn't a sidewalk on the, on the south side of Cleveland Street, or is there? There isn't, right?
There are sidewalks on all the front edges.
Oh, there is on Cleveland Street on the south side. There is a sidewalk.
Yes, every, every street has a sidewalk.
Oh, of course it would. What am I thinking? It doesn't have a bike, it doesn't have a bike path.
That's right.
Right, but it does have a sidewalk. Okay. Question answered.
Excellent. Well, that wouldn't, that would do that to do but work for. Um, anything else, Commissioner Gek?
None at this time. Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, Commissioner Madrid, thank you for being patient.
No worries. Um, this isn't necessarily for the developer. It might be Gordon and it might be Kyle, so whoever feels like they want to jump in in terms of their area of expertise, please do. Um, couple of questions. Um, I know several years ago when we were first talking about this, we were talking about water supply. And the initial presentation tonight made much of improving the water flow in that area of town. And I remember from our meeting two years ago, uh, the city engineer saying that, you know, this number of homes would essentially put us at, at the limit. Um, so in the report, I, they talked about, uh, fire flow by modeling. And so I was wondering how that is done. If you could just give us a quick overview as to how that's done with, you know, the current water pressures and the pipes that are in place. And then the second question I think might be to Kyle, um, on page thirty-eight of the packet, the traffic study. Um, they were talking about possible ODOT traffic controls at Yamhill and Main and Pine and Main. Um, could you define that a little bit more by what you think that might be? Would it be lights? Would it be crosswalks? Um, what exactly do you think that would lead to? Um, and then the only other, um, comment I have for the developer is I appreciate about a third of these proposed homes being townhomes, but there's no apartments and in its proximity to the school. Um, I think that's a pretty big oversight. Um, and I do want to echo, uh, Marie Frigge's comments too, that I don't see any sort of park or green space. This all looks pretty, pretty tightly wedged in there. So that's the extent of my comment. So the fire flow, the traffic study and the, um, pedestrian crossings. And then, um, why there were no apartments in this latest, uh, extension. Thank you.
Gordon, would you like to take a shot at those?
Sure. So the fire flow, so, um, just to correct one thing that Mr. Hoyt was talking about, it, it's not water pressure that looping a system helps. Water pressure is actually set by the elevation of your reservoir. So that's, that's the pressure. It's actually the flow that gets, uh, improved when you have a looping system. Because that just means you, you have water that comes from different, um, locations, reduces the friction loss, and so you get more flow. So it is true that this loop will be highly beneficial to the city's water system with regards to water flow. And it will help, uh, the flows at the school. So what, what's done for a hydraulic model, they actually put in all the uh, pipes and sizes and material and elevations of all the pipes and elevations of the reservoir that sets the pressure. And then you go through and get very, um, specific fire flow that's been tested. So they'll go out and run the fire hydrant in a certain location and measure the flow. So now we have a way to calibrate that model. So when we run the model, we can, or we don't do it, but the modeler does it. Um, they can adjust the output and adjust the input so that it mimics what actually is happening out there. So once that model is calibrated, both for pressure and for flow, then, then you run it for that new area and say, okay, I've got a model that predicts the flows, uh, fairly well. So let's see what it does, uh, for this new subdivision. And they create and extend the water lines into that subdivision, uh, sizes, pipe material, elevations, and then run it for fire flow, which means you have a residual pressure in town of twenty PSI. And that's a state requirement during fire flow. And that produces the predicted fire flow for that new development. While it's not exact, it, it gives a good approximation. And in this instance, you know, residential, uh, typically has a fire flow requirement of one thousand gallons per minute. And they were showing fire flows of fifteen hundred gallons per minute. So the model showed that we meet the requirements with a fairly big factor of safety. So that's how we get the fire flow. Um, it, it will improve the fire flow to the school, but it won't bring that fire flow to code requirements because of, uh, some of the other restrictions in the system. A, a school usually requires like three thousand gallons per minute. And city is looking at other improvements to try to make that happen. But they certainly have the fire flow, uh, required for the development. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Excellent. I trust Commissioner Madrid does not have any further comments or questions at this time for the applicant. We'll move on to Commissioner Nordstrom.
Well, let me, let me just, I think you had answered. Sorry, I, I believe she had asked about the, the ODOT intersections as well. Um, to my knowledge, we don't have any specific inner, inner information about what goes into those or what is occurring with those specific intersections in those evaluations. Uh, it's just that those are, you know, they, because that is an ODOT road, they do require those, you know, those long studies that ODOT does on those intersections. So unfortunately, um, I don't have any additional information on that, Gordon. I'm not sure if you do. Um, but that, that was kind of the, the thrust behind the comment in the staff report was that those, those intersections. I, I believe it's Pine and, um, Pine and Yamhill require essentially additional consideration by ODOT.
Yes, that was what was in the report. I was just wondering if either of you had, you know, and I'm not holding into this. I'm just, you know, thinking because of the curve in the road there and whatnot and the decreased visibility. Um, what would you guess that, that that might be? Would it be just the striping and the crosswalks? Would there be additional perhaps flashing signage? I, I don't see a traffic light going in there anytime soon. But I'm, I'm guessing that, you know, when they traffic controls, it would mean something like that.
Are, are you talking about at the Yamhill and Pine and Main intersections?
Yamhill and Main Street and Pine and Main Street.
Right, those are being evaluated as part of the, um, ODOT project for the realignment. Uh, highway forty-seven through, yeah, through, through the city. And at this point, there's no definition of what they're, uh, proposing that's still in process.
Mm-hmm. Do you know if there's any interface between, uh, the various jurisdictions? You know, with adding a hundred and one lots and, you know, the additional population on that corner of town. Do you know if there's any interface between our, uh, proposal here with ODOT? In other words, is ODOT aware that there will be additional, um, population, I guess is the word that I want.
Typically, when they, when they do this, they'll make projections. So they wouldn't know specifically for this subdivision, but they do make projections for additional traffic that occurs.
And ODOT, ODOT is notified of, of these applications. So if they incorporate those into the studies, who knows, but, um, they are aware of the project.
Okay. Well, that, that answers my questions. Thank, thank you all. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Nordstrom.
Um, yeah, I, I think I have maybe a couple questions, maybe a comment. Um, so, um, in terms of the Cleveland Street, the three-quarters street, um, I'm, and this is probably a question actually for the city staff. Um, so I think we've seen the picture of the streets before and we saw that when JR two came on, right? Because it was this sense of like, well, there's this long-term plan. And I guess, um, I'm curious, I mean, like what we see is like some picture with some superimposed yellow and red lines on it, which is potentially different than what actual like easements. Or, I mean, like I, I know there's a plan, right? But is that plan, like, how detailed is that transportation plan? Like, I mean, is it like mapped out and surveyed, like this is where the road would go? Or is it like, kind of like, eh, here's kind of what we thought would be reasonable? So I, I guess I'm trying to understand, I mean, I, I first I want to say, I appreciate that there is a plan that puts half that street on the school property and that the developer is saying, you know, we, we can do better than that. I, I want to say I appreciate that, but I guess I also want to know, like, is, is there already a built-in easement? Like, is this in the long-term plan? Has this been, the school knows that half a street is going to go there at some point? In which case that makes kind of a different long-term view on this versus, yeah, somebody with their, you know, CAD design drew those lines on there and we never really plotted this out.
Yeah, so the, there's two different things we're looking at, right? Where, so there's the transportation systems plan, which has a, um, future street section. Um, and that essentially shows where right-of-ways will be in the future. Um, that doesn't have a specific platted right-of-way, you know, like there is in other parts of the city. This is a fully undeveloped prop, property, so there's no, um, at least to my knowledge, there were no, there's no set right-of-way. Um, that would accompany this extension. It's just essentially saying, when the street comes, this is where it's going to be located. Um, and then the developer, um, is required to provide the land for that street as part of the development process. Um, so that, that is essentially what happened here. Now, um, yes, Um, so that, that is essentially what happened here. Now, um, yes, the map essentially shows that street running. Through that, that property. So I believe that's, that's what um the, the applicant was, was referencing. Um. But yes, it, it's always a little tough with some of these, um, with three quarter street improvements because. Um. You know. There may be properties that are technically undeveloped, but will they actually ever come in and be developed and then build that last quarter of the street? That's hard to predict. So that's something that um the code kind of allows for by saying, well. You know. There's. If this is, you know, likely to come in at a future date, then you can authorize that three quarter street. That's typically what staff. Then staff recommends in order to um, to allow for that in the future. Um, so that's, that's what was included with this application. Um, you know. It's who, if, if that comes in and redevelops in the future, you know, I can't really say frankly, but. Um, in answer to your first question, um, no, it's not a, a platted right away at the moment.
Okay. Um. And then, um. In terms of the, the. Uh. Whatever, whatever the, the one that um, the. Developer is sort of concerned that, that, you know, the last minute in the city, right? The last minute. Whether things can be built or recorded or plat- you know, this, this, the, where there, I guess is still maybe, maybe potentially some disagreement. And we're trying to come up with. Um. I, uh. You know, something that works for everybody. Um, is. Just a second. Sorry, I was invaded by my dog at the inopportune moment. Um. So first of all, let me say like, I am totally open to ideas of extensions and things like that that mitigate the risk. But I. I. My understanding of how. Our job as planning commission works. And the law and things is that. Um. You know, as long as the city, the engineer, the staff, the school district says, yes, we have the capacity for this building. Then, then our, our job is to say you've met the code and the building can go forward. If, if the city says we don't have the capacity for that building and those houses, then it. It is actually. Like. We should say, no, we aren't, we can't do this. Um. And so I believe like kind of the rub here is the city is saying until the wastewater treatment. Comes online, we don't have the capacity in the city for the, for this building. And so I do understand the. You know, the developer, what, you know, sitting on this property, having this property, being ready to do this. But I guess I kind of feel like the city has said, we don't have the capacity. To do this until this happens. And at some point, someone's taking on that risk. And um, and I just, I. I am a little bit concerned of the sense that. That. By us saying until this comes on, these, these houses can't. Happen. Um. I, I don't know that that is, I don't know that that's actually against the law to say that. Because my understanding is that if we say we don't have the capacity until this happens, we don't have the capacity until this happens. Um, but I guess maybe if, if city staff could clarify that or something. And again, I'm not saying that we should say no. I, I think an extension. Maybe is the right way to go with this, but I. I don't know that we have to say yes when there's no capacity.
Yeah, so, so there isn't, no one, neither staff or the developer was proposing to allow. Buildings to be built and hooked into the system. Um, what the current condition that I talked about at this, well, the, the revised condition. Um, that I talked about at the start during my staff report was essentially saying. Um. Until the plat is recorded, so that is. You see that map in front of you, um. You know, I'm not sure how familiar you are, are with the, the process after that, but essentially the developer then comes in, constructs the streets, constructs the public utilities. And then they can come in and submit construction plan. Well, they consider submit the construction plans, then they construct. And then they come in and the city gives um its go ahead to record the plat. And what recording the plat does is it actually creates those legal lots. Um, and what happens when those legal lots are created is then the developer can go and sell those lots or in, and, and those lots can be built on. So what the, what the condition that, that I proposed, um, after talking internally with staff over the last week was essentially saying. This plat cannot be recorded until um. The improvements are totally done, because we, what we wanted to avoid in that case is having home buyers say. Oh, city, why are you behind on your public improvements? Why can't we buy our house and move into our home and complete the purchase? Um. Now, the issue with that then is then that can be kind of fuzzy with, with what a moratorium is. And to be honest with you, I'm not, I, I don't have a, a. Great depth of knowledge on the legalities of a moratorium, but essentially cities can impose moratoriums if there's no capacity, but there are certain. Things that come with that that they have to do, and that's what, that's what uh Mark was referring to. Um, so the compromise there that, that I suggested when, when Commissioner Bandi asked me about it, this was also something the applicant noted. Um, was that the planning commission would allow an extension. That would give the applicant the ability to not have to worry about their approval lapsing. But would still not allow any homes to be built or sold. Um, until those improvements were complete. So in not, in none of the cases that we've discussed, there would be homes allowed to be hooked into a system. That doesn't have the capacity or even building permits issued for those homes. So the question is essentially. Whether we want to. A, allow the plat to be, or whether you as a planning commission want to allow the plat to be recorded. Um, but say, oh, but you can't sell homes. So that's, that's option one. Option two is grant an extension and say. You have this, you have an extra year to get for the city to complete the improvements. And that way the applicant doesn't have to worry about the preliminary approval. Expiring. And then option C is, is, is saying, no, you can't um, record the plat and we're not going to grant an extension. Um, and that's kind of the, the hard line approach that I think the applicant had some concerns about uh with the moratorium. So. The key element there is that in none of those three scenarios. Um, would homes be built, homes be, or homes be sold, or even lots be sold? So. The, the concern that the cities had in the past with allowing lots to be sold. Um, or having issues with lots being sold is like I said, then the home, then the home buyers or the lot buyers come to the city and say. You know, you're wasting our time and our money. We're not able to get this home financed. What are you going to do about it? And then Shannon and Amy and, and. Everyone has to deal with that. And so that's what we're trying to avoid so that they don't have to deal with that. So that is why the, the compromise that I would recommend. Is that the extension of the preliminary approval is, is allowed, which would give the developer. Um, the, the peace of mind essentially to say. Our approval is not going to run out. We're, we're not going to run into a, a finicky planning commission in two years that. Decides they don't want to give us an extension. Um, but we're also not going to put that extra load on the city. So that's, that's the compromise. But again, in no situation will the system be hooked into homes. That. Cannot be supported, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that, that helps a lot. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. I see we have another little hand raised from Jim. So before we get on to Commissioner Terrell's uh questions for the applicant. Um, Jim, do you have just a supplement? Jim Bandi. If you're trying to chat, you're just on mute, my friend.
Yeah, there we go. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Um, so essentially Kyle, what you're saying is. Kind of, uh. I, I kind of get there's like an in between sort of deal and. When it came to JR two. We uh restricted them to selling the homes until a certain. Amount of. Uh. Infrastructure was present. And it dealt with water and sewage. Um. So you're saying, you're, you're saying that we should be ahead of that a little more than we were on JR two. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so not without going into it too much, what, what, what the planning commission allowed about a year ago, I believe, with the JR two modification was to allow. I think something like twenty two building permits to be issued before the plat was uh, or before the pump station was complete. And again, what that hap- what, what happened there is then the homeowners or the home buyers of those twenty two homes called the city and said, hey. What's going on? And that created some stress for staff and it created a situation for the new home buyers were. Um, blaming the city and it was just a, a pain for the city. So yes, the middle option is making sure that the, that the applicant does not. And this was, this was what uh Mark was referring to earlier, that the city allows an extension kind of preemptively to avoid any. Um. Any conflicts with the preliminary approval, should you approve this, the subdivision today. Um. Which expires after eighteen months. And the biological improvements um of the wastewater treatment plant, which um I believe are scheduled to be completed sometime in early. Twenty twenty five. So they're right up, the timelines are right up against each other. So in order to um remedy that, to that situation. And, you know, while not running into some of the, the issues with, with moratoriums, um, whatever those may be. The solution would be essentially. You know. Granting a, a, a extension to ensure that the applicant could still um. Not have to worry about their approval expiring and the city wouldn't have to worry about um dealing with angry home buyers. Um, or uh hooking into a system that's not capable of supporting new homes.
Okay, so there's.
There still would be no building permits allowed, no sales allowed.
Okay, so there's really no. In between there. I'm just trying to see. So in other words, uh, you're saying they have to wait. Or we have to extend. Certain amount of compliance that. Allows them to not wait so much. I, I, I'm just trying to see if there's a middle ground there.
No, so, so that, that is the middle ground. So the, the, the wastewater treatment plant will come, will be available or, you know, be online. When it's online and that can depend on a few different things that are outside both the city's control and the applicant control. So. Things like environmental permitting and, and things like that, that, that timelines can get skewed. So um, the middle ground to that. Is so, so the, again, to repeat what I, what I mentioned to Commissioner Nordstrom, the extreme version of that would just be to say. No. Uh, the plat absolutely cannot be recorded and we're not going to give you an extension. Um, and if the timeline comes up to, you know, early twenty twenty five and you don't have that extension in place, your plan's going to, your, your approval is going to expire. So that. That would essentially tell the applicant that. You know. Their. You know, the, the, it's out of their control. They can't do anything about it, which I think was, was the main issue Mark brought up. Um, the middle ground is preemptively allowing that extension so that we don't run into that situation.
Okay, I, I, I get it, Kyle. So we're going to allow their, give them an extension. But by the same token, we're not going to be beholden to. Saying, yeah, everything goes ahead.
So, yeah, so as part of that, the homes will still not be able to be so, or the lots won't be able to be sold and the homes won't be able to be built.
But they can, they can build and get it ready for sale.
So, no, so they can, they can just record the final plat and the final plat. Yes, essentially. Yes, gets the, gets the lots ready for sale.
I get it. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Madrid, have a supplementary question?
All right, I'm at a disadvantage on the phone instead of the iPad. Um. So not to beat this to death, but in our standard operating procedure under any one of these types of reviews. Um, we typically as a third option. Have the ability to. Postpone a decision and revisit. Um. And just based on all of the presentations. Uh, Shannon's comments. Um, certainly, you know, all the questions that we as commissioners have. Um. I, I, I'd personally like a little bit more time to digest this. Um, and maybe get further. Clarification from the city council and the city manager. Um, as to what these last minute conversations. Entailed because I, I'm feeling. Uh, pressured and, and I don't really feel like I have the information that I need. To make a good decision on this. And I'm certainly not calling for a moratorium, but I'm, I'm also feeling like I don't have the information that I need to make. A good informed decision. So we also have that ability. As a commission, I believe, to revisit this. Is that not correct?
So you, you will have to identify what additional. Information you would need. Um, in order to do, yes.
Yeah, well, I, I think it basically comes to. Pretty much everything the previous three commissioners have all, have all said, and that's those two items. So. Um, let's, yeah, let's keep the discussion going. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Madrid, we will return to that if there is a circumstance to request a continuance. The staff report outlines that the city, the planning commission has until June twenty ninth. Uh, in order to make a decision on this subdivision application. Um, last or certainly, uh, certainly not last, but uh always first in our hearts, Commissioner Terrell. Uh, any questions or comments to add to the collection that will give the applicant a chance to respond to?
Yeah, I do, um. Considering Cleveland Street, I'm, I'm looking at where, I'm looking at the map currently. Um, where Cleveland Street extends into JR two. And if I just hold a straight edge up to that. Street in JR two. It actually doesn't. It doesn't plat across. On the school boundary. It goes straight, it goes. Just inside the boundary line and it would appear to me. That it could be, um, it could accommodate a sidewalk on both sides as a new street within the subdivision. Um, I'm not sure why. Um, if there's no easement mandated by our transportation system plan across school property. Why um, we would require it to go across school property in any form. So that's my first observation. Um, my second observation is that whilst they continue to tell us that there are bike pathways. On Wilson Street. In fact, those are imaginary bike lanes because they, um, I don't know if it was staff or the developer. Has said they will not strike bike lanes on Wilson Street. And to be honest, there is no way I will vote to approve this application. If there are not bike lanes striped on Wilson Street. It is minimum code requirement. That will narrow the forty six feet of pavement and, and remake it so it's not like a bumper car. Expanse of forty six feet. The forty six feet, the intent of that code. Is to accommodate bike lanes. Bike lanes unstriped, unmarked are imaginary. They do not exist. And any claim that they exist when they are not marked. Is, is, I don't, I don't know who would ever make that claim that has any experience in city planning. So I, um, actually am very offended that after all the discussion we've had with bike lanes. That we continue as a staff and perhaps as a developer to think that you don't need to mark bike lanes. It is ridiculous. You need to narrow the bikes lane, you need to narrow the driving lanes so that drivers are clearly queued. That they need to slow down on the street and whether our speed reports records lo- average low speeds. It, it's, it's immaterial. The, the, the. Drivers that see that road, a straight road. With absolutely no channeling of traffic will accept, will be exceptionally driving faster. It's a direct connection to the school. So that is one very firm. Comment that I'm going to make and I, um. To tell you the truth, I'm a little bit disappointed that nobody has pointed out that Wilson Street was not planned to be striped. So that's that. Um, I do, I do. Very, I'm very much concerned that Cleveland Street have two sidewalks. Because as, as Commissioner Nordstrom pointed out, that will never have sidewalks on the north side if it's not done now. We know that city resources are, will be constrained for years to pay for a big infrastructure that's been. Um, implemented and to remediate these regressive street designs. Is very expensive and it puts it on the backs of our citizens. So it's my duty as a commissioner to protect the people who will be harmed if we do not do. Progressive street design, the minimum that's required by our code. Thank you.
The, the bike lanes will be stripped.
On Wilson Street, it says they will not be striped in the plan.
It's included in as a, as a condition per the city engineers' comments in the staff report.
What page is that? Because I did not see that and I went through meticulously, so I would like to.
It's. Per, let me see.
I saw that they be striped on Third Street and then I saw the staff that it was.
The, the bike lanes will be striped wherever there are bike lanes.
Okay, I, I need to see exactly where that is because. Okay, I, I need to see exactly where that is because that was certainly not clear in the.
So if, if you want to make it, it, it very clear as a condition, you are free to add it as a condition, but. I apologize if that was not clear, the bike lanes will be striped wherever there are bike lanes.
Okay, and I am happy, I am more than happy if staff, if staff wishes to make those buffered. I'm happy to make it a condition that we do the two foot buffer, the four foot bike lane and the seven foot parking. And then reduce the travel lanes to ten feet. Which would be a safer street anyway, especially connecting to a school. So that actually is fine with me. I think that's perfectly safe and appropriate on a, on a street with such excessive pavement width. So that could be something that as a commission we could consider. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm going to reserve comments. Actually, I see Ms. Gek, did you have one other additional question to add to the items for the applicant?
Yes, forgive me for coming back to it. I'm just getting used to the process here. I wanted to. Piggyback on what Commissioner Madrid said about the townhomes and. That we have no duplexes, that we have no single level. Homes for. That are. Attached homes. And I know that that may not be what's, we're talking about here entirely, but I just thought I'd put that in. And also second about the piggyback with her on the parks. I, I also question the. I just wonder about the traffic. Study that was done and the, how, how there wouldn't be just a profound impact on Polk. And forty seven. Which is a real, Polk is very small street and it's. It's right into the school and people from that. That subdivision, the new subdivision, coming down on Third and turning left onto Polk to go up forty seven towards McMinnville. I just can't imagine how that would not be a really critical. Critically impacted. So that's all I will add.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Commissioner Maya.
Yeah, I, you know, I also, I also have some of those same thoughts, but I know that at some point you mentioned that we are not reviewing those. Those elements in, in terms of design. Tonight, I just want to make sure that there is going to be an opportunity to review those elements because I also, I have some concerns as well about. Lack of green space, you know, when, when we're looking at these subdivisions and then just thinking about Carlton's park system. In, in, in general, there, there isn't a lot to it. And, and if we're gonna be building a hundred and one, which is what I believe the number was from the packet. New homes, you know, we have to assume that there are going to be some families there who might want to enjoy some green space and park. And, and, and parks and, and that's really concerning to me that I, I didn't see anything there in the plan. So I know that you had mentioned earlier that we're not talking about those things today, so I'm not sure when is a good time to throw those comments in. I'm, I'm, you know, like Commissioner Gek, I'm, and this is only my second meeting, so I'm not sure. I'm still learning the processes there, but. You know, I, I would like to know, I guess, whether or not we will have opportunity to weigh in on some of those things at a later point.
Sure, I can take that.
Thank you, Commissioner Maya.
So the, and sorry, we, we've. A lot of cities and I'm gonna keep this short, but a lot of cities do require a certain percentage of Parkland dedication with subdivisions. Carlton's codes currently does not have that in there. I know that's something that the commission has been very vocal about wishing to see when the code update occurs. So essentially that, as far as this particular subdivision, there is no standard for. X percentage of Parkland being dedicated, but again, I believe the city is looking into making that a requirement for future subdivisions.
Do we also have a similar, you know, that you know, is, is there any wiggleworm in terms of the types of housing that are provided? I believe it was Commissioner Madrid that had mentioned that we don't, you know, we're not seeing any apartments there. Or, or anything there I can imagine would be maybe a little bit more geared towards low income housing, which is also a concern to me. Anything on that?
Yeah, so the, this is in R two zone, so multifamily dwellings are not allowed in the R two zone. So the developer, even if they wanted to, could not develop apartments in this zone. That would have to be the R three zone. So that is why there are no, well, one of the reasons, I'm not sure what would be proposed, even if it was zoned that way, but. The permitted uses in this zone do not include apartments.
The provisions from House Bill, you know, and, and maybe this is speaking out of ignorance, but the provisions from House Bill two thousand one. Did that not apply to this?
No, Carlton, Carlton is, is too small.
Okay.
But we're in the process of slowly making Carlton a bigger town by these subtle additions, so perhaps one day.
And again, that's, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna allow Commissioner Bandy to provide the supplement here. He's gotta go off mute, Jim.
I, I don't, I don't know if it's a supplement, but. Living right off of Third, very close to Polk. Very close to Pine. I totally agree with the concerns about that particular cross section. In relative to the elementary school. If there is gonna be anything, I'd love to see, it would be some sort of traffic control at that intersection. Because those kids cross that intersection every single day, both directions. On bikes, on foot. And it's definitely a potential problem, potential accident. I've been waiting, not waiting, not anxiously awaiting, certainly, but I've been expecting. Something from there because ever since I moved in here and I'm a fairly recent resident of Carlton, just a few years. And it's always crossed me as one of the places. Where there ought to be some sort of flashing control, whatever, something to control the. The problem is. The government leans towards the truckers and Highway forty seven and everything, but we are a town that needs to protect our citizens. And so I'm in favor of some sort of traffic control at that particular point, which is directly to the west. Of the school and the most frequently crossed. To the other side of forty seven of any other passageway, so. Yeah, I, you know, those things concern me and, and, and we have to consider those with everything we do. Towards development when there is no other way for those students to cross except right there. And there is nothing there to stop. Anybody, there, there is nothing controlling that traffic, including semis and everything else. So that's all. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
So, I, I just wanted to, to direct, make sure the people have the chance to ask the applicant questions. I know we're, we're running into hour three almost here. So I wanted to hopefully guide us a little bit towards any question that the applicant has. And then if there is additional information, we can certainly, you know, move towards, if that's, that's requested, we can, we can do something like a continuance or we can move into discussion. But I just want to make sure we are cognizant of the time.
Sorry, I'm trying to terminate my audio here. Can you hear me okay? Kyle, yes, okay, sorry. I'm just having a hard time hearing on the other side and after three hours, my AirPods gave up the ghost. Suzie, I, I can't hear anybody, but I see you've got a supplement to make while I'm trying to get back here on audio.
Okay, yeah, I would, I think that when we're talking of traffic on Polk Street and talking of. Traffic along Third Street, I think the heart of the problem is, is that that is a school zone collector street. That is not supported by multimodal infrastructure really at all. It doesn't have a, on Main and Third, there's no, there's not even a handicap ramp on Main and Third. So then the sidewalks are ridiculously narrow, ordinances aren't enforced so that cars are parked all over the sidewalks. Children have to cross back and forth because the sidewalks are discontinuous. And I think there is some argument to say that adding more houses in this area is not our, our. Our transportation system plan does not support, our transportation system does not support. Added traffic on that street, regardless of whether cars can safely go around, back and forth. It, it's not safe for children and for pedestrians or anyone on a bike. So I think there is some argument that unless the developer would like to do further off, off-street. Off-site improvements that perhaps our, our transportation system simply cannot support that now. We could do, we could do. A good faith effort as a city to, to improve that right away on both sides so that it is in fact. Street that supports children coming back and forth to school, but as is, it really doesn't. And, and you know, the little short section from the subdivision to Polk Street really will not remediate the problems on Third Street. And I think if we're welcoming more residents, we have an obligation to protect them with a transportation. System that supports that, that school traffic. So I would welcome the developer thinking of ways that they could. Contribute to supporting transportation in back along Third Street to their subdivision.
Okay, we have one more comment at this point from Commissioner Madrid and then we will. Hear from the applicant again in response to this series of questions or comments.
Yeah, my, my wrap up comment here is, you know, there's been some very thoughtful discussion this evening. And harkening back to that meeting a couple of years ago, Gordon. I think if, if you remember, I mean, I remember your testimony about the, the water supply. And I appreciate you elucidating about the, the water flows and the loop and everything. But I also remember the traffic study that was submitted at that time. Which was pretty full of holes. I mean, most of the data was. Collected during COVID when the kids weren't even in school. There was Commissioner Bandy to address your concerns. There was actually a twelve year old boy on a bicycle hit at that Polk and Highway forty seven intersection. Which was not even included because there was no coordination. Between the law enforcement agencies that were involved in that. So given those concerns, you know, of adding all these extra homes to that southern. End of town. And the, and the traffic that that will generate, you know, having taken my own children. Polk, Polk and Pine many, many times, and that was, you know, a good twenty years ago. And I remember, you know, the cars backing up on the shoulder, waiting and waiting and the school buses coming in a certain way. And having read, you know, the, the review and the staff report saying that that was adequate. I can't imagine adding, you know, a hundred more families is gonna make that more adequate. So those are some of my concerns echoing, you know, what the other commissioners have said, as well as my own reservations from a couple of years ago. So I would maybe invite you to reflect on those and potentially address those. When coming up with. The building plans, but at this point, I, I, I really, to reiterate, I would really like to get more information. From this run-up to this meeting before making a decision tonight. So when the time comes. To make a motion, I would make the motion to delay this a bit. And then bring it back in front of the planning commission for our, for, for further discussion among ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Madrid. I will ask Kyle real quick, there are no public agency letters or other comments, correct, besides those that were circulated to the commissioners this afternoon?
That is correct.
All right. At this time, I'd like to give our applicant, Mr. Hoyt, or AKS, an opportunity to address some of these items that have been. Discussed and outlined by the commissioners over the last little while.
Thank you, appreciate the time and appreciate the thoughtful discussion and appreciate very much the commitment to your city. It's nice to see. A couple of things that I want to touch base on, just to make sure that there's some clarity. I know that Commissioner Terrell talked about wanting to be sure that there was a sidewalk on both sides of Cleveland Street. The proposal is. The original proposal was to construct two sidewalks. The applicant was requested to modify that, construct a sidewalk on the south side and a walking path of asphalt on the north side. And the applicant agreed to do that at the request of those that. Were directing the application. So there is a sidewalk on the south side, a walking path on the north side. Both are to be constructed by the developer at the developer's expense. And so there will be the two sidewalks. One, also understand the concern regarding parks. It is a concern in every jurisdiction, it's a concern in every community and it's a legitimate one. The, and I see that Commissioner Terrell has a question and I'm happy to stop and answer it if that would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you. My, my point is, on a sidewalk or a walking path, whatever. That, that the current plan entails. I would like to see a sidewalk on the property that the applicant purchased. So a sidewalk on both sides of Cleveland Street. On the property purchased so that you're not encumbering the school with an easement. That frankly devalues their property if they ever had chose to sell it. And you know, I, like I said, if I put a straight edge from Cleveland Street from JR two across that property, it goes. On with, you can put Cleveland Street within your own property.
Thank you, appreciate the comment. Parks is always a concern in a lot of jurisdictions. One of the things to remember and consider is that every one of these properties will pay system development charge. That system development charge provides funding for the city to enhance its existing parks. Or to acquire additional land and new parks. And if the city's code is updated to require dedication of land and the city's in a position to require that. Under the current code, the city's not in a position to require that. And the parks SDCs will be paid, the city's in a position to direct those. And the city will have the direct benefit of that, as will its citizens. There's been a lot of discussion regarding traffic concerns. I want to make clear, one of the things that you heard the chair talk about at the beginning of the hearing was that you're sitting in a quasi judicial role. You are evaluating this application based on the evidence submitted. There has been no evidence submitted that there are any off-site traffic impacts that require mitigation. There is nothing in the record in front of you to support that. There is certainly empirical experience that's been referenced by the planning commissioners. None of us believes, there's no city that has perfect traffic flows. There's no city that doesn't need to improve its, its road conditions and its improvements. But in terms of sitting in your quasi judicial forum, making a decision based on the evidence before you. The presentation was that the traffic study indicated that there were no off-site mitigation requirements necessary. So there's nothing in the record to support requiring off-site developments of those things. Now, a couple of things to note there though. Again, this development is gonna pay traffic SDCs. Those SDCs are gonna provide funds that the city can prioritize as long as those things are identified in its transportation system plan. To make those improvements. And so if those improvements that are being discussed are in the transportation system plan. Then this development will provide resources that can be applied to those things. And if they're not, then that plan can be addressed and remedied and those funds applied to those things. But there's not a basis on the evidence before you to require this development to take, reach off property. And make improvements. No one wants an unsafe city. That's not gonna be productive. No one wants to build a project that's not gonna help the city thrive because it's not good for the project. So there's a common interest here and the design and the analysis of the traffic engineer demonstrates, and that's this traffic engineer. I understand that there was criticism of a prior traffic engineering report by Commissioner Madrid. And may or may not be right, that, that application's not in front of us for us to review or consider. So from a traffic perspective, there's not a basis for us to be able to go offsite and make those improvements. So from a traffic perspective, there's not a basis for us to be able to go off-site and make those improvements. The concept of more dense homes, there were apartments proposed in other portions of JR Meadows too, those apartments will be developed. The zoning of this particular project does not allow for that. That's not something that can be done here. And that's a, a code provision that effectively um, is tying the applicant's hands in terms of anything there. And, and from a development perspective, the ability to build attached homes was attractive to the applicant and this application was held for the city to enact the legislation that was necessary and the code changes that were necessary to allow those attached homes to be constructed. So this is someone who has waited for an opportunity to bring a less uh, a denser form of housing, a more affordable form of housing to the city of Carlton, waiting for those code changes that were anticipated and then applying for and, and using those. To wrap up, unless there's anything that AKS is gonna wanna add when I kind of finish up my comments, you've heard a lot of comments about what to happen with the project in the event that the wastewater treatment facility is not improved in time. And what I will say is this, you saw the slide earlier that showed the anticipated completion date of the pump station. Uh, that was the hang-up in JR Meadows two. And I think we all experienced the fact that the anticipated completion date was not the completion date. And we're in, facing a very similar situation here. And if the city is willing to say, yes, we absolutely guarantee that this project will be done by the date, that, within the date that your application or any extension of it applies um, is effective, then we have no concerns with that. But if there's no guarantee with that, then effectively what the city is doing is saying something that's outside our control and something that's outside your control could take away your ability to develop this project. And i- if that's the case, then effectively the city's really granting nothing. It, it's something that could just disappear over time. And that's not legally allowable. The city either has to say, yes, we don't have the capacity to do this, as was referenced, and then adopt the consequences of that and implement all of the things that are necessary in response to a moratorium. All of this kind of paralleling what the legislature's currently talking about in terms of trying to develop homes to say cities have an obligation to generate a certain level of housing within a certain period of time. And if they don't, we're gonna come in and modify their land use process to streamline the ability to get approvals, to get things online. That, this is a similar tension. And in this particular instance, absent a guarantee of that approval, the only really thing that, that provides what the law requires, which is that the goalposts be fixed, is that the applicant be able to record the plat, which vests the approval and makes it final. And as long as that's done, there is no desire or need to sell lots. No one is asking for the ability to do that. It is only record this. We offered the extension as a means to try and find some solution, but it's not really a solution. It puts a very difficult burden on the applicant because it is entirely dependent on something outside its control. And the city engineer is still on the line. If he'll jump on and say, I absolutely guarantee you one way or another that this will be done within um, thirty months of the approval and the planning commission grants the one-year extension, then we have nothing to be concerned about as long as we can record on that date. But otherwise, the thing that really is necessary from the applicant's perspective is the ability to be able to record the plat so that the approval is final. No one wants unhappy customers. No one wants unhappy home buyers calling the city. We are not asking for building permits, which is what triggered a lot of the calls in the prior situation. We're simply asking for the opportunity to record the plat, vest the final approval and shut down until the project can go forward, the homes can be completed and can connect to the system. Nothing will go on the system. The system won't suffer any burden until it's ready for it. There will be no sales. And the inability to market or sell lots, which we proposed and the condition that we proposed, uh, would prevent the city from getting those calls. The building permits, we're not asking for that, not at this stage. Be happy to address any comments or questions that the uh, commissioners have. Looks like Commissioner Bandi might have one.
Yep, Commissioner Bandi.
Yeah, I, I wanna thank Mr. Hoyt for his candidness and his, his perspective. And I, I understand where he's coming from. I understand where we're coming from. This is our town and this is how we feel and we love this town. We're here because we love this town. Um, I think there's room to both sides to compromise. Um, and I hope that we can come to an amicable, amicable decision. Um, I'm not against your development in any way, shape or form, uh, Mr. Hoyt, not at all. Uh, I'm just wanting to make sure that the city is the wonderful little town that we all love and enjoy. And, and everyone that participates in it, particularly our children, are safe and sound. So I, I just wanna tell you, I have no animus and I have no predetermined uh, decision that development shouldn't happen. That is not in my mind. So I just wanna let you know, thank you for your time and thank you for your efforts. And I'm sure we'll come out in the end with some amicable way to make this all happen. Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, so at this point where we are in the evening's events, um, unless there are any other questions for the applicant, and I'm seeing none at this point. Um, this-
Looks like, uh, I think we have some AKS would like to make some comments if we could before we close the record.
Excellent.
Right?
I think we, we had a motion to continue, but A- AKS, go for it.
Sure. We wanted to talk just a little bit about two of the street issues and, and Monty, uh, Hurley, the project engineer is gonna take my spot here and, and speak to, to those two things.
Is it, is it okay if we share the screen again? It should still be available.
Can everyone see the screen right now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. My name is Monty Hurley. I'm project engineer with AKS Engineering. Yeah, go back one. This slide shows the existing conditions plan survey. Can everyone see that? Okay. You can see up at the uh, northwest corner of the site, there is a twenty-four foot of right-of-way dedication on adjacent to tax lot two oh one and also tax lot two hundred, which is the property that's owned by YCTC. That's what actually established the alignment uh, for Cleveland Street that there's been a lot of talk about. That also aligns with the city's transportation system plan, which shows the street splitting the right-of-way. Or splitting the property line between the school and the subject property. So
Give that-
I, I actually also um, volunteered and uh, was helping out YCTC and went to uh, put together a layout on that property for a building. They wanted to do a community center. And actually had a pre-application conference with the city where the city said that the right-of-way would need to be extended on YCTC's property and they would be responsible for the half-street improvement along there. So uh, when this development came forward and we shifted the street further to the south to put more of the improvement on the subject, the, the subject property by the developer. And the developer voluntarily uh, providing more improvements than was required. And then what's shown on the TSP um, and putting a, a sidewalk, volunteering for a sidewalk or a path along there. It seemed we were doing the right thing. Furthermore, I met with the school superintendent personally and talked about putting in that sidewalk along there. Also talked about putting in a fence with some, with some gates for access in there. And that's what the school superintendent supported at the time. Now, I don't have a agreement in writing right now. Um, but as, as we've talked about, that's something that comes later with construction, especially when it's a voluntary improvement. Uh, that seems like we've covered our, our bases and we're doing the right thing here. And I guess there's been a lot of um, misinformation thrown around about this improvement uh, when pretty clearly we, we were trying to do the right thing when you look at the information. So that's on Cleveland Street. Uh, there was something also brought up about bike lanes. Uh, we've always intended to stripe all the bike lanes in this development. Um, I don't know about the developments in the past, can't speak to those, but we proposed bike lanes in this project. We intend to stripe them. If you wanna put another condition of approval in there, you can. But that's, it, it's an issue we don't need to really talk about anymore because we intend to do it and we're going to do it. The other item I'd like to touch on, there's been a lot of talk about um, the schools here. I personally had my kids go to this school. Both of them, raised them all through there. Um, I, we have we're, we're, we're again doing the right thing by extending our third street and improving it from this subject property to the school district by looping the water line and providing that for the school. Uh, all, all these things that, that are being talked about here, we're trying to do the right thing on and um, when some of the misinformation gets thrown around, I'm, I'm not quite sure how to address it. But if, if you got questions for me on that or anyone from the applicant's team, we're, we're happy to address those. If not, if, if the project ends up being continued, that's fine. We, we appreciate your support. We appreciate the questions you have. We're happy to answer them. We think we have a good project here. It's good for the town. Um, that's helping out with a lot of things. We're gonna pay our SDCs to help pay for other projects throughout the city. Um, and, and we'd like to be able to, to uh, resolve the condition with the, with the plat and be able to get it recorded and eventually be able to get the project built when the city's wastewater treatment plant um, is in place and, and, and can support the development. Thank you.
Thank you to the AKS team. Suzie, do you have a, a comment here? Otherwise, I believe we are expecting the motion to continue and we could, uh, perhaps-
Yeah, no, I do just have one comment. Um, I appreciate um, that um, that this has been thought about. That Cleveland Street has been considered. Um, I, I, I still have questions about Cleveland Street. But um, I do also would like to make sure that um, if we um, create detention, that there's also some um, rain garden provision in this, in the planting strips to um, align with the requirement that our discharge is substantially free of pollutants, including gas and oil and grease. And the only way to do that is to filter it through um, some sort of biofilter. So I would appreciate that being um, considered as you decide what sort of detention you're doing. Thank you.
Commissioner Madrid.
Monty, this is Commissioner Madrid. Thank you for weighing in here. Um, I was one of the founding members back when it was just CTC, before it was YCTC. And you know, a lot of the programs that are offered in those uh, buildings back behind the school, this is why um, I'm just gonna make another plug for Park Space because I don't think it's, it's um, necessarily a good policy. And I just want the developers to, to take this into consideration to be foisting off on a school playground uh, in lieu of a park. Because a playground is not where families are gonna go to enjoy family time. It's where kids are gonna go um, and usually unsupervised. So um, with that being said, um, I appreciate your community involvement. All of our kids have been at that school. Uh, Commissioner Bandi, even though new, is right in that neighborhood. So he sees these things quite often. And I spent uh, twenty years on East Main Street and a couple of years in a rental on Cleveland Street. So I'm very, very, very uh, familiar with the properties in and around that region. So that being said, I just think um, you know, I wouldn't use the term misinformation or disinformation. I would just say that there's been a lack of communication between potentially the school district, CTC, our commission, the city. Um, and I think just a little extra time for us to get ourselves on the same book and page would ultimately reflect in just a, a really good, solid uh, project moving forward. So I just wanna point that out and thank you for those comments.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we are now at nine ten PM. I understood from Commissioner Madrid's prior comments that she was going to be making a motion to continue the evening.
Real fast, we have to end the hearing and close the record. I also wanna just make a quick comment. Um, and that's that if we're going to continue the hearing, uh, staff or the applicant need to have some sort of direction on what information is missing in order to make a decision based on the applicable approval criteria. Um, right now, I, I personally don't have any real direction on, on what information is needed for the, for the continuation of the hearing. So it would be hard for um, it would be hard to come back with, with additional information. Additionally, the, the planning commission would have to um, decide whether to close the record and continue the hearing or to leave the record open. It sounds like um, you just want more information to help you with your own evaluation, but it's, it's not clear based on the discussion. I wanna make sure we get that taken care of before we move forward.
I think to the extent that additional information can be provided by the applicant, I think we leave the record open.
Um, can I, can I just, my comment is about the additional information? Um-
As is mine, real quick.
Something really specific that I think would be helpful to me um, is because I, like, I, I really appreciate everything that, that, you know, AKS and, and um, everybody has said about the Cleveland Sl- Street and I, I, I appreciate how much effort has gone into already thinking about it and that we came to it really unsure about all that background of what went into thinking about it. And it sounds like originally there was a proposal that seems like it was more aligned with what a lot of us were, were, would have expected. And that there's kind of this, somebody has asked that that not happened because of possible future development. And I guess what would be really specifically helpful to me is what are the really specific concerns? Whose concerns are they that, that maybe have changed the developer's plan from originally offering the street with two sidewalks or the fence or the like, I guess that is a really specific piece that would be helpful to me. Who has asked that that not happen? Why have they asked that? Like, I would like to understand that piece better. Cause it sounds like maybe the original plan was more aligned and if something changed, who, who, why and what? So we can better understand why it's where it is now.
Sure. That was, I mean, that's, that's a really simple answer, I think. And that's that when you have a full sidewalk and a curb and gutter and drainage, I mean, maybe Gordon can speak a little more to this than I can. Um, the, it's, if, if that street was ever to expand in the future and complete that, that quarter, all of that would need to be taken up, ripped up and redesigned. Now, if, if that's something the planning commission is, finds acceptable, then that's a planning mission decision. We're, what, 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 from a staff perspective, that was the concern. And it's pretty straightforward concern that this path provides a more temporary um, street that would not have to be dug up and redesigned, um, if it was to be expanded. That, that's really the, the simple answer. Um, and you know, it, obviously if, if that's something the planning commission disagree on, that's, you're, you're free to have that opinion. That, that's but yes, I, I think that it is important to note that that was, and I, I believe I did note this during the original staff report, that the developer did originally propose that sidewalk. And that was something that, that some staff had some concerns about in the, in the future, just to make sure that that was not something that was, you know, had to be dug up and, 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 you know, however many years of that site was to, to develop and, and complete that quarter street. So um, from that perspective, that's, that's really the answer to that question.
I, I appreciate that. And then I guess the, the school dis- you know, like we've said-
Can I add to that?
This is the school district.
Sure. I think Gordon had a quick comment.
Uh, yeah, the, the original proposal was for a three-quarter street with a sidewalk, curb and sidewalk on both sides, which means that you would be accepting a street that didn't meet street standards for width. It would be a complete, complete street that wouldn't meet street width. It'd be, I think, forgot what it was, twenty-five or twenty-six feet. And it's supposed to be thirty-four. So that, that was the issue that staff was looking at with regards to- The original proposal. So it's not that we said, don't do a sidewalk. It was, you're building a street that. Is complete, but it's not a complete, doesn't meet the standards. And we understand that we have a interesting situation with the school district and. Uh, we had talked with AKS about alternatives. And they were very willing to. Uh, talk with us about that and came up with. The alternative that is shown now. That's, thank you.
Suzie, do you have another comment you need to make?
I'd actually like to see um, the street elevation for the complete street with two sidewalks. And twenty-five feet wide, that gives you two twelve and a half foot travel lanes, which is. It's standard for a street. Um, it doesn't allow on-street parking, and so I would understand we would have to grant variances on that street. But um, I am willing to consider that if we get the um, if we don't encumber the school district. So I would like, for me, if we have a continuance, I would like to see um, an alternate proposal for Cleveland Street that has full street improvements.
And to the inverse of that, I think it would be helpful, since we are talking about the school in the third person. Um, if there is a representative of the school, whether that's the board, while we're going back and getting more information. While Suzie has a, a broad abstract point about granting rights, there may be. Beyond the efficacy, there may be specific reasons why this one does not reduce. And, or substantially inhibit the value of the property, and it would be beneficial from the long-term marketability or otherwise use. Of the school's property. So we should not exclude them as a stakeholder. While we're going back, I think it'd be meaningful to have their perspective if staff wouldn't mind gathering that for us.
Right, sorry, the only, the, the last thing I want to mention about this, I know we've stated this a few times, but this is a voluntary offsite improvement. So if this was something that, that the city, um, if, if the city found that a full street improvement was necessary here. Then that's a different story. Um, but as it is right now. Um, the, the three-quarter street is, is what had, what the applicant is proposing, what the plan is proposing. And what staff has been working with. So any findings to the contrary would have to show why that. That full street is needed and why those off, you know, how, how that would work es- essentially functionally within the code. So there's. Yes, you can ask the applicant to come back and say, you know, bring all this information, but at the end of the day, we do need to make sure that. This is a code-based and evidence-based decision, and uh, that's, that's really what's important here.
So Kyle, can I, can I just bring to your attention? Um, it seems that all conditions must be met to apply to allow for a three-quarter street im- improvement. And it, one of the conditions that needs to be met is that the adjacent property is not fully developed. And I would argue that the school fields are fully developed. It's a school campus. That's what it's intended to be, and that's what's developed on that property. And so I would say all the conditions to. Are not met to allow a three-quarter street um, improvement, but it needs to be a full street improvement.
And if I could just jump in the conversation here for a moment, um, CTC is a nonprofit. They do not, will not, will never have funds to potentially in the future, if that. Property were to be essentially taken back and then be required to break up, to, to then develop it with the curbs, the sidewalks, the storm gutters, whatever. Uh, I don't, I don't see that possibility ever happening, not as long as CTC owns that property. And as a nonprofit, again, they don't, they don't have that kind of money to make those sorts of um. Improvements. So I think it's, it's really incumbent on us to get, to, to get this right. And everybody's done a fantastic job. We've had a long and very illuminating conversation, but also to Chairman Stewart's um, point. I think there are stakeholders that are not present that need to be, and for that reason. I'm gonna reiterate my intention to call for a continuance of the meeting and leaving the record open.
All right, we have a motion to continue and leave the record open. Do I need to close this immediately, Kyle, in that instance, or I, I'd leave it open, correct?
You can leave the record open, close the public hearing.
Yeah. All right, ORS, section one nine seven point seven six three states that upon request, commission must either grant a continuous for no, no less than seven days or hold the record open for no less than seven days. Perden- permit any participant opportunity to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence. We have a motion, I'm, I'm closing the public record at this time. We have a motion to continue. Do we have a second? Motion to continue, and for our purposes, I think we should assume this would be one month from today or one month's, next month's meeting at April. Uh, seventeenth, is that correct? April seventeenth, is that enough time to have any of these follow-on questions addressed so that we can resolve this in a timely fashion?
That would just be a matter of opinion because I'm not sure how quickly, you know, the school district or CTC. Uh, would respond, and I think that, you know, this is typical, not specifically to this hearing. We have up to a hundred and twenty days, so um, maybe split the difference and say sixty days. That would be my proposal unless there's further discussion.
I'd prefer sixty days because I'm out of town on the twenties, on the twenty, on the seventeenth.
All right, that pushes us out to. Uh, our next meeting or our next meeting after April will be Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. So there is a motion before the planning commission to uh, continue this matter until May fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Do we hear a second? Looks like Jim Bandi's given the big uh, hand of approval, so there's a first and a second.
Sorry, Chair, I just wanted to be clear. I think you've, are you leaving, I'm assuming you're leaving the record open.
The record is being left open, yes, it's a motion to.
For the statutory period only, I'm assuming?
Yes.
The sixty days, yes.
No, I, the, the seven sixty-three continuance is the fourteen. I mean, it, that, that's not a sixty-day continuance of the record being left open.
Yeah.
Cut, well, Kyle, who, who is gonna reach out to the school district and CTC to invite them?
We can certainly do that, but, but again, the, it's the, the, the record. Is only left open for a certain period of days. So that's, that's what I was, that's what we were just commenting on.
Okay, and then what's, what's the? What's the, what's the recommendation to allow those people time to respond and or uh, participate?
Well, they have that, I believe, is it seven days? Tyler, can you clarify what the, what the process is for that? Tyler still here? Just want to make sure I'm not misstating. Um, I believe it's, is it seven days and then um, the rebuttal period, is that right?
What's a, uh, Chair, you read the statutory site. I'll pull it up real quick if you read that real quick.
One nine seven point seven six three, paragraph six of A. I'm pulling it up as well.
Is there one of you that wants to read that into the record?
It, it, it doesn't need to be in the record because it's a law that applies across the board.
Just for the people still present for our edification, so we're all on the same.
Happy to do that, absolutely.
This is why I'm very glad I'm not a land use lawyer full-time, all these numbers.
I'm just, I'm just cognizant of all the people who might just be listening on audio.
Again, that statute is ORS one nine seven point seven six three. Anybody who is listening.
Which has been renumbered one nine seven seven nine seven.
Sorry, I, I believe the city attorney is on this Zoom, um, so that might be a good. A good ask just to verify. Tyler, are you available still?
I'll just cut to the chase.
Kyle, uh, Tyler had to go into a different meeting.
Okay, thank you, Shannon.
All right. So we're not making any um, legal analysis here. I know, appreciate from Mark, Mr. Hoyt's perspective, but one nine seven point seven nine seven. Um, and we were referring to section six sub A, so I will read the, the, the lead-in sentence and read subs- six of A. Local quasi-judicial land use hearings, notice requirements and hearing procedures. Following procedure shall govern the conduct of quasi-judicial land use hearings conducted before a local governing body, planning commission, hearings body, or hearings officer on application. For a land use decision and shall be incorporated into the comprehensive plan and land use speculations. At section si- six sub A, it continues. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. Local hearings authority shall grant such request by continuing the public hearing pursuant to paragraph B of this subsection. We're leaving the record open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony pursuant to paragraph C of this subsection. If the hearings authority grants a continuance, it shall be continued to a date, time, and place certain at least seven days from the date of the initial hearing, that is today. An opportunity shall be provided at the continued hearing for persons to present and rebut new evidence, arguments, or testimony if new written evidence is submitted at the continued hearing. Any person may request prior to the conclusion of the continued hearing that the record be left open for at least. Seven days to submit additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony for the purpose of responding to the new written evidence. And subsection C says, if the hearings authority leaves the record open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony. The record shall be left, left open for at least seven days. Any participant may file a written request with the local government for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the hearings authority shall reopen the record pursuant to section, subsection seven of this section. I will not read subsection seven here, but I will refer anybody to a simple Google search. ORS one nine seven point seven nine seven, if this is the kind of thing that uh, gets you excited. Next time when we have our meeting, we will ensure that we have this part of the conversation when county, excuse me, city council is present. Um, so with that.
Here, Stuart?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Uh, to that point, the city attorney has another uh, meeting that he has to attend at the same date and just about time. As the planning commission, so the planning commission may wish to look at moving their meeting to Tuesday. So that the city attorney can attend.
Um, I think that would be acceptable, especially given uh, the, the import and nature of this request. Um, and so I think if, if Net doesn't mind my doing so. Uh, adjusting per motion to continue this matter to May sixteenth, not the fifteenth. And that the part, is part of this, we agree collaboratively that we are adjusting our commission meeting from Monday, May fifteenth. To Tuesday, May sixteenth. Would that work for the applicant? Mr. Hoyt?
Works for me.
Excellent. Um, Mi- Ms. Madrid, is that okay if we amend your motion and expand it to make for that adjustment on our scheduling? There's a thumbs up I saw. Okay, so that is a revised motion from Ms. Madrid, calling for a second on that revised motion. Jim gave us the thumbs up before. Is that a, a second for this one, Jim?
Uh, no, because I won't be available at all. I'll be on a plane to France. So anyway, um, no. So I'd like a different date. Sorry, that's just my two cents.
Does anybody else want a second and that's a motion? Not everybody, so long as we have a quorum, we can address um, this matter. I don't think we can kick it out to June. Um, I don't think that would be a smart idea.
I'll second it.
And that is Robin Gag. Excellent. We have a motion, we have a second, and that motion is to continue today's hearing for approximately sixty days. For a planning commission meeting on Tuesday, May sixteenth at six PM. We will also be rescheduling from our May fifteenth day to have our meeting on the sixteenth. Uh, before we take that, one final question to city staff. Amy, is there any uh, logistical issue with making that change?
Uh, none of this time, there's no foreseen uh, issues.
Understood. We will make sure that we live on and have Jim's uh, spirit.
No, is there not any reason we can't make it the fifteenth as opposed to the sixteenth? That's all I'm asking. Fifteenth, I'm good, sixteenth, I can't.
The city attorney couldn't make it.
Okay, then I don't count, that's for sure. City attorney is important.
You, you certainly count, Jim, but we, we just gotta play the, play the, the, the averages. Uh, so with it, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please uh, raise your hand, indicate. I, this is a continuance and a rescheduling of the May fifteenth to the May sixteenth date. On favor, anybody opposed or neutral? Two of, I, I, I asked that in the conjunctive. Any, anybody uh, opposed to the continuance? Jim and Noel, all right, we've got. One, so, so I, I didn't allow Amy to get that, but um, Commissioner Madrid voted in the affirmative, Commissioner Nordstrom, myself. And Suzie Terrell, four in the affirmative. Two were in the negative, Commissioner Amaya and Commissioner Bandy. The motion passes and we are rescheduling this matter for. May sixteenth at six PM, and we will have our kid, uh, planning commission meeting that Tuesday instead of that Monday evening.
Uh, can I ask a quick question? Since Jim won't be available, will he be able to submit um, comments? Like, would it be possible for him to make sure he gets a copy of the planning commission packet in time? To thoughtfully consider it and to submit comments to be read aloud at the meeting?
I, I don't think there'll be an issue since we're delaying the meeting one day, normal course, it, it gives an extra day for review uh, ahead of that time period. So. I don't think that will be any problem.
Jim, I'd rather.
I appreciate Suzie, thank you, and, and I will do everything I can to try to somehow figure out. A way to actually uh, be part of it, but I don't think it will happen because I'm flying from. Uh, France back home, so I, you know, it's like, not, probably not gonna happen, but thank you, thank you.
But hopefully you could submit some um, written comments that we could read.
And I think I'm gonna be in France the same time Jim is, and I was like.
Oh, wow.
My schedule, and I was like, oh my gosh, we get back on that Tuesday from France as well.
That's the day I'm flying back.
You know what? I'm gonna go to France, just now.
I mean, it looks like I'll be sitting in the Seattle here for like six PM, so maybe I can zoom in on my phone.
Hey, guys, so uh, Mr. Hoyt.
Yep, well, I, I'm, I'm just, if, if the meeting's not gonna be on a regularly scheduled day, I wonder if there isn't some period, some point where. All of the commissioners could be present to participate. If, if we're gonna move the meeting off of its regular time, perhaps we should find a date that everyone can be present.
You know, Mark, I love you. I, I agree with you, and I think if we could delay it a day. Or two, it would be great. It doesn't always have to be a Tuesday, so you know, uh. That's where I, that's my feelings and.
Yeah, no, that, that'd be nice. Shannon, can, can you weigh in? Cause you, I'm guessing, have privy to the. The city attorney's uh, schedule there in front of you. Would either the day, as Jim's saying, the day after, maybe the week before, the week after, we can be flexible.
Let me try texting the city attorney right now. I do not have access to his schedule, unfortunately. But let me just, I believe the Wednesday will work. Uh, would Wednesday work for everyone else?
Wednesday, the seventeenth works for me.
Mark, how about you?
I, I will find a way to make it work if it works for everyone else.
Okay.
What about Robert and Noel?
Get my schedule.
It'll work for me.
That's, that's Wednesday, May seventeen.
Plans, I wasn't trying to mess everybody's plans up.
Well, you reminded me of mine, thanks.
We want to get it.
Was that Wednesday, May seventeenth?
Wednesday, May seventeenth.
Yes, that works fine.
Okay, so Annette, would you like to restate your amended amended motion?
I would like to make a motion to reconvene on Wednesday, May seventeenth. Same bat time, same bat channel with everyone here. Um, to further take up this conversation. And before I forget. Don't let me get off. Um, we have a planning coming up on the twenty-second. And I have not gotten the link to register for that. And I have not gotten the link to register for that. So that's an aside, but don't let me forget that. So the motion is reconvene, May seventeenth, Wednesday, six PM. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And just for the purposes of clarity, that includes a continuance for the pending matter that's before.
Yes.
Question. Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Do we, is that as clear as mud?
Clear as can be.
Okay.
Before we adjourn, though, is if this is our last meeting with Kyle, I just want to thank him for absolutely everything. He's been a pleasure to work with.
You should come back in May.
Good sport, Kyle. You're a good sport.
I'll 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 talk it out with Shannon. I I may be back if I can be, but I will.
Sorry to do this to you.
Just just for the sake of continuity, it would rock.
Yeah, I I will, I will do my best. There are obviously other factors at play, but I will do my best.
We appreciate you tremendously. So thank you for everything you've done.
If you decide to schedule a root canal that evening, we won't give you a hard time about it. Okay, so continuing on with our evening, we have finished the twenty twenty-one dash zero one subdivision. And we will revisit that on May seventeenth. With respect to new business from the commission, there was a matter that was just recently mentioned by Commissioner Madrid with respect to the planning, training that is supposed to be happening this Wednesday. And I know there was an email circulated by Amy with some information. Perhaps that can be circulated one more time. She sent an email this week about an Eventbrite registration. So if you haven't checked your city emails, it's it's sitting in there, the information necessary, but perhaps Amy could just give one final clarification and a reminder email to everybody who's planning on attending.
I'd be happy to do that. And I believe there'll be another one with some tickets and email. So I will send it to you as soon as I get it. So make sure you check your city emails. All accounts are registered through those. Because that's what we have to use. So just keep your eyes on open tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you, Amy. I really appreciate that.
Not available from here, but I'll get it forwarded to me. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other new business or commissioner comments this evening? Hearing none and seeing none. One final call for any citizen comments, people that have been hanging out after all of this. Hearing none and seeing none, I will accept a motion for adjournment from anybody. Looks like Jim Bandi.
To adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All right, we got a motion and a second, but we'll both call them first and seconds from Jim and Annette, all in favor. Wave goodbye. See you next month, April seventeenth. Everybody have a great end to their winter and start to spring.
Thank you.